Calling this meeting back to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education, item 4.1, the Pledge of Allegiance, Superintendent.
Please stand. Ready? Pledge of Allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic.
Student member Jing, would you like to do the broadcast statement?
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, October 10th at 6:00 PM and Monday, October 11th at noon. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity...
Hold on just a moment, some technical difficulties. Test. Test. We're hearing an echo. Test. Still an echo. Sounds like it's coming from over here there on your side. Oh, test, test, test. Okay, there.
That was it, yeah.
The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website, or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your time comes up.
Perfect, thank you. Item 4.3, student stellar, stellar student. We have Jocelyn Cabrera, a freshman from Hiram Johnson High School, will be introduced by Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Am I on?
Yep.
Yeah, so today's stellar student is Jocelyn Cabrera. She is a freshman at Hiram Johnson. And then ACIS is the After School Education and Safety Program, which provides after-school educational and enrichment opportunities. ACIS Program Manager, Mr. David Trong, nominates Jocelyn Cabrera as she completed the ACIS Freshman Launch Program this summer, where she attended daily and fully participated. At the end of the program, Jocelyn performed a Mexican Folclorico dance in the summer showcase. She currently attends the Expanded Learning Program where she holds a 4.0 GPA and embodies a true student athlete, as she is also a member of the girls' volleyball team. And lastly, as we close out the Latinx Heritage Month, let's celebrate Jocelyn for not only being a stellar student, but also as a student who celebrates her heritage through folclorical dance. Congratulations, Jocelyn.
Jocelyn, would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to say thank you, and I don't know if Mr. David is on here, but I'd like to say thank you to him too. I appreciate you guys for recognizing me, and I'll keep doing my hard work.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jocelyn, and thank you. Keep up the good work. All right, do we have Mr. David on, or? No, okay. Thank you so much, Jocelyn. All right, item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are no actions to report out of closed session this evening.
Okay, 6.0, agenda adoption. Can I get a motion? I got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, item 7.0, public comment. Last I heard, we had about 20 public comments. Is that correct? All right, with that, I am going to allow one minute per public commenter, since typically we only allow 15 minutes for the public comment section, but we want to make sure we hear from each member of the community. So please keep your comments to one minute. Thank you. Ms. Collins?
First up, Ms. Awesanya.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I got my thing down to two minutes, so I'm just gonna go for it and see where we end up.
Okay.
Thank you to all of you for the opportunity to speak and for your leadership. I want to acknowledge the decision-makers who listened to the voices of the Amwin family in choosing not to shut down the first or third grade special ed classroom at Amwin. I do acknowledge you listened, but it's hard to be grateful because of what it takes to gain your ear, and because there are other classrooms at other schools who also need you to listen. It's hard to be grateful because you made a massively impactful decision without even having a conversation. Decisions were made not only without listening, but without even asking. I can hardly imagine the closure decisions being handled in a more destructive way to the people who will be affected by them, to children who need maximal transition time, to parents who organize their whole lives around SDC placements, who probably fought for months or years to get it in place. There's so much to say about how the closures affect the families and children with special needs.
Thank you, Ms. Awesanya. If you could, please wrap it up. I apologize.
Yeah, no, I understand. I will just, I'm gonna just jump into the last two sentences. I would love to see you collaborating with the teachers in a different way. It feels like the latest example of them being treated with disregard instead of collaboration, and we're gonna lose listeners. You can't just force them to make decisions, to be put in positions when they have no opportunity to be a part of that.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Bethany Cox.
Ms. Cox, are you there?
Yes, hello. I also just am saying thank you so much. I feel like we were heard. I feel like this experience really showed how much community is available to us as a district and as a community. Obviously, my school really showed up for the special day class, the special ed students, and I really hope moving forward that this sentiment will resonate and reverberate within the district and the administrators to really, you know, listen and talk and, like she said, ask questions as they move, because it's really powerful when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Next speaker?
Cassandra Hoff.
Ms. Hoff, are you there? We can be going, oh.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now. Go ahead, Ms. Hoff.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Cassandra Hoff. First, I would like to discuss the Independent Study Program. It is Week 6 of the school year, and neither of my children have attended a single day of class. They are among the 700 students still waiting to have a teacher assigned to them. Given the overwhelming demand for independent study and the program's obvious problems, I'm disappointed that the school board has failed to make independent study an agenda item for the second meeting in a row. It gives the impression that the board is unwilling to address the problems or help students navigate this failing program. Second, I would like the school board to integrate a permanent virtual learning component into the regular school classroom. Virtual learning has value beyond the pandemic. Since the technology is already in place, let's improve it and fully integrate it into the classroom. That concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Maria Rodriguez.
Unmute. Okay, I think I'm here.
Hi, Maria, go ahead.
Evening, everyone. I was going to speak to you on equity and music education, but I feel compelled to speak to you about this process of limiting speakers to one minute. I've been going to school board meetings for about 20 years now, and this is our one chance to speak to you all. Do you, do any of you, and I'm looking at you now, have any idea how much it takes for someone to spend their day writing out two minutes in a concise way to try to make an impact on you because they believe that our voices make a difference? Why do you keep cutting people off while the school district administration gets to do these enormously long dog and pony shows about every aspect of what they think they're doing good? I have been in support of you guys, and I was even gonna say something complimentary to you, but I don't have time right now. I've been supportive of the superintendent, but the one criticism that is across the board true is that people at the ground level are not involved. The first speaker spoke to that. Teachers are speaking to that. There's a reason I stepped down from the LCAP, and coming here tonight, I thought I could make a difference, but I have 10 seconds left to tell you that. I will tell you, I admire you all. I used to think I wanted to be a school board member, but after this year, I realized that it takes way too much work and courage, and I don't have it in me. So sayonara and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I also would just like to say that I know it's hard to go down to one minute when typically you are allowed two minutes. Typically, we allow 15 minutes for public comment, and I just want to make sure that the public understands that this is a meeting of the board and not a public meeting, and we are all very accessible, and all of our email addresses and phone numbers are listed on the district website. And if you ever want to have a conversation, please reach out to us individually. Next speaker?
David Fisher.
I am combining my time with Nikki Maleski.
Okay, you've got two minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
The district is in crisis. Students are suffering. One, Sac City has a massive staffing crisis with approximately 200 certificated vacancies, meaning an estimated 6,000 students are without regular certificators every day. Number two, Sac City has an extreme shortage of substitutes. Number three, the district unwillingness to create a virtual learning academy in the spring, and its poor planning has left over 1,500 Sac City students waiting for a viable alternative to in-person instruction. Four, the health and safety of students and staff is impacted by the district's unwillingness to engage in meaningful discussion regarding these matters. Five, the district has been cited by the California Department of Education for its failure to provide services to students with disabilities. Six, the district's budgeting practices continue to be disarrayed, while in actuality, the district has a structural surplus, having operated with surpluses in nine of the last 10 years. Seven, unlike other school districts that are responding to staffing shortages by recruiting and retaining staff, including raises, the district is demanding massive cuts in teacher take-home pay. Number eight, Purb has issued its 18th complaint against Sac City since the superintendent became superintendent. Number nine, the turnover of top administrators of the district since you've been, since Aguilar's been superintendent, has been unprecedented. Ten, overwhelming majority of district employees voted no confidence in superintendent's leadership, yet he just got another raise. Meanwhile, with all these crises, our only confirmed date to meet with you is October 13th. Since September 22nd, we have offered multiple additional dates in which to meet and negotiate. District has not responded to any of them. Once again, we encourage you to bring a representative to the school board and participate in those discussions, even for a limited portion of the talks, so we can work some of these very important issues, and you can hear what the teachers think, and we can work together to make better decisions for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Next speaker?
Ingrid Hutchins.
Good evening. I'm extremely concerned about our staffing crisis. While this is a common problem in many districts right now, the severity of the problem in our district is alarming. The shortage has the potential to grow exponentially unless something is done to retain current teachers and recruit new ones. The power to slow the drain and change the direction of the situation lies with you as a board. You can no longer sit idly by as the district receives dozens of curb complaints. You can no longer sign off on unnecessarily unnecessary yearly pink slips. You can no longer participate in groups and discussions that cultivate a toxic attitude toward the very teachers in your district. You can no longer ignore the district's inept bargaining methods. You can no longer turn a blind eye to the district's desire to reduce teachers' take-home pay when most other districts are offering raises. You, as elected trustees, have the power and responsibility to ensure that the district does something to become a competitive employer. Otherwise, you will need to be prepared to take responsibility for the dangerous situations and educational voids caused by not having enough qualified teachers. Imagine what newly credentialed teachers think of the environment that has been allowed to fester. Why would they come here when every other district is hiring and paying well? You have the power to change things. You alone are tasked with the district's oversight. Stop waiting to do what you've been elected to do. Teachers and school administrators are overworked and stretched thin right now. That stress will inevitably lead to more severe shortages. Turn things around now before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mohammed Kashmiri.
I actually wanted to cede my time to Olivia Minor.
I'm sorry, who are you giving your time to, Mel?
She signed up as Jane Doe, but her name is Olivia Minor.
Olivia, okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Olivia Minor.
Okay, Olivia, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. As a staff of the school district, I come onto you because you are leaders, and we look onto you for leadership. I work in transportation, and I can see our department failing, our families. It is very hard to sit in an office and answer phones and have to explain to parents why, after the school year has started a full month, I cannot provide them a bus, or I cannot provide them reliable transportation. Every time that I get on there and I say, "I am sorry that we do not have a bus available for you. I am sorry that the bus is running 30 minutes late." It is no longer an excuse for these parents. I am embarrassed. I am embarrassed to represent our department. You guys have been chosen by these people because they believed in you to be able to lead us, to take us to better places, and I ask for you to do that, to provide better wages for our people not to leave our department, for our teachers, for our drivers. It is very sad to see our senior drivers that are really willing to work with these parents and with the children having to leave because they can no longer provide for their families. It is sad to see that every time that I ride a bus and I take a student to school, from school to home, they ask me, "Are you going to be my permanent bus driver?" They have no stability. Unfortunately, many of these times, we are the first face that these children see, and we are the last faces that these children see before they go to bed or before they go to school. I am implying you, I am asking you, as our leaders, to provide transportation with the funds needed, to entice our drivers to come back to work for Sac City Unified School District, so that they can come and be able to provide for their families, but have good workers, people that are willing to work for this school district, not because it's an obligation, but because they have pleasure in serving this society and serving the children. These are the future. These are, these are the children that will be our successors. They will one day sit in your seat. They will one day sit in my seat and take my position, but we have to be able to provide transportation and take them so that they can get a fair education. That is it.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. Next speaker?
President Pritchett, there are several people that requested public comment that I don't see, so I'm gonna call their names and give them an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
The first is Shonda Westley.
Ms. Westley, are you on?
Yep, I've got it now.
Hi, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm again calling about, and again talking about the Independent Studies Program. The Capital City Independent Program continues to have new students attempting to enroll each day, on top of the close to 2,000 that have already been enrolled in the beginning of the school year. In addition to continuing to hire new teachers, Capital City needs support from the district to manage this intake and maintain communication with the now nearly 700 students who do not have teachers assigned to them. We also should be looking at why the Independent Study Program continues to increase in enrollment. Families are realizing they are not comfortable having their children back in the classroom for many reasons, mainly because of the lack of a mandated weekly onsite testing protocol. I would like to ask that our superintendent to commit during this meeting to visit the Cap City school site, to see what is happening in real time. I know that Board Member Rhodes has already done that because it is technically in his district, but each board member on my screen has kids from their schools with Cap City right now, and I would suggest that each of you give them the respect of visiting Cap City and see how they're trying to make this work.
Thank you, Ms. Westley, if you could please wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, Ms. Collins?
Chardonnay Kelly.
Ms. Kelly, are you there? No. Next speaker?
Maria Saxton.
No. No.
Sikander Jagorhey.
No.
Andrea Hassan.
No, not on.
John Doe.
No.
Mr. Flores, are there any other speakers that have signed up? Ms. Cortez signed up for an earlier one, but Ms. Cortez, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Cortez.
Yes, hello. I am a member. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, I'm a member of the teaching community at Amwin Waldorf Inspired, and I'd like to share a bit about my work with the SDC. Our SDC are woven into the cultural and social fabric of the school. They participate in all school assemblies, sharing their own creative presentations. We join forces at recess, collaborate for festivals such as Dia de los Muertos, and engage in hands-on projects. We walk together in second grade through the neighborhood during the Lantern Festival, designed to bring the gift of song and light into the greater community. My own mainstream class, now Grade 4, has greatly benefited by building long-term relationships with special day class students. After years of community building, it was devastating for my students to receive news that this class could close. I was approached by one of the more quiet SDC students after school yesterday. He said clearly, but with grave concern, "We are being made to go to another school, and can you tell your kids if they miss me, I miss them too?" It struck me then that the term least restrictive environment, a concept generally interpreted so as to ensure that all students receive the services that they need to be successful, can apply to all students. If teachers and students are ever restricted from a building, but from building a compassionate community with special education students, we are impoverished because of it. We teachers will lack the opportunities to develop professional practices that inform forward-thinking policies. We are less equitable because of it.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez, if you could please wrap it up.
Yes, one line. My students can only be truly successful when they have found the skills needed to model inclusiveness and learn the empathy and compassion which makes social justice a reality for every member of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, two additional public comments.
Sarah Waldrop.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
On behalf of me and four other parents, the Boatmans and Mark and Julie Smith, okay?
Okay.
So, hello, board members. I am addressing the COVID plan Sac City Unified has implemented at Sacramento schools. These pathways, as you call them, have not helped children, but instead caused them great harm. The board and district have been entrusted to protect our children, and it is time to do what is best and return our schools to normal. The risk to kids from COVID is negligible. For ages 0 to 18, the survival rate is 99.997%. They have a better chance of dying from the seasonal flu. It has been proven that masks do not prevent infection and transmission, but instead can cause physical and psychological harm. I have sent you the studies proving this. It's bad enough the district makes the kids wear masks at all, but my child is made to wear a mask in PE. Have you completely lost all of your common sense? The school district sends us emails about poor air quality when there are fires, but you're perfectly comfortable covering our children's mouths and increasing their intake of carbon dioxide. And this same hypocrisy can be seen in the district emails about Suicide Prevention Month. During 2020 to 2021, there was a dramatic increase of depression and anxiety and suicide attempts by kids, 50% increase in attempts by teen girls. So don't profess to be concerned about suicide. I also find it deplorable that the district has used propaganda to coerce kids into getting vaccinated. We get district emails that say, "Hang out with your friends again. Get vaccinated," or "Hug Grandma again. Get vaccinated." Only yesterday, I was on your webpage, and a pop-up appeared and said, "Vaccine clinic at Serna Center today. First 100 people to get a vaccine today will receive a free slice of pizza. Trade your health for a piece of pizza? You've gotta be kidding me." This COVID vaccine is completely experimental, and kids and adults are the test subjects. There have been thousands upon thousands of adverse reactions and deaths caused by the shot. For God's sake, this shot doesn't even prevent infection or transmission of COVID. Kids are at higher risk of injury from the vaccine than from the disease itself. We've seen the announcements from the CDC, raised risks of myocarditis and pericarditis in children, putting them in hospitals, swelling their heart, and leaving them unknown long-term damages and potentially death in their future. Dr. Reiner Fulmich and his international team have stated in their legal case against the CDC and the WHO that the experimental jab is in clear violation of all 10 of the Nuremberg codes, which carry the penalty of death for those who violate them. I will cover code number one. Voluntary consent is absolutely essential. There should be no intervention or any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, or any form of constraint or coercion.
Ms. Waldrop, if you could please wrap it up. Thank you.
Yeah, they are, the virus does not protect from infection, so it is therefore not a vaccine, and duress constraint, it's everywhere. If you want your life back, get the vaccine. So today, we are standing up for the...
Thank you, Ms. Waldrop, if you could please wrap it up.
And I do realize some school districts are getting paid, which is unconscionable, but if you stop this political theater right now and amend your ways, you may still have time to be redeemed. But if you continue, you will be complicit in crimes against humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two additional speakers.
Two more. Ms. Gwene Bird.
Ms. Bird, thank you. You have one minute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Perfect. So, yes, I'm the parent of two high school seniors in the district, and I have one request. Let high school students attend their football games. I know this sounds trivial in comparison to all the other very legitimate things that people have been talking about tonight, but seriously, one of the biggest rivalries in the district is happening tomorrow night, and students can't attend unless they're an athlete or band member. Homecoming is in two weeks, and students won't be able to attend the games. I don't understand this. I know we're in the midst of a pandemic, but football takes place outdoors in a large stadium where social distancing is easy, and it's especially maddening because other public schools in the same county but different districts don't have any restrictions about students attending. They're in the same county but have different requirements. Why is that? If Sac County is taking the lead from our county health officers, why are other schools in the same county able to do what we're prohibiting? Clearly, our students are anxious to attend. I've attended two away games recently in Sacramento County, and there's a huge turnout of students and parents in the stands. The energy and school spirit is amazing. These kids have missed out on so much already in the past 20 months. Why are we keeping them from enjoying such a basic part of their high school experience?
Thank you, Ms. Bird, if you could please wrap it up.
I'm done. Thank you. Please consider that.
Thank you so much. Next speaker?
Final speaker is Ellen Yin Wyckoff.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, school board members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Ellen Yin Wyckoff, and I'm a parent of a seventh grader... My name is Ellen Yin Wyckoff, and I'm a parent of a seventh grader at the School of Engineering who is now a student at Cap City. So I just wanted to talk just very briefly about the independent study program. My daughter's one of the lucky ones, that she's been assigned to teacher and given instruction, but since school has started, she's only received a total of nine and a half hours of instruction and some written assignments, which she's kept up with. But I'm very concerned about this. This is not an equitable, this is an equity issue where it's not an equitable education for her. There are many days where she doesn't have work assigned unless I provide instruction for her. I know, I want to commend the staff at Cap City. I know they're working really hard to get fully staffed, but this is a real critical issue. And the thing that I'd like to ask the school board, is there a possibility while we're still trying to ramp up the program at Cap City to really make this an agenda item until the program is fully meeting the needs, the students are getting an education on a daily basis through the independent study program? That's the main thing that I wanted to ask you all, and that it's really important, especially as students should be getting access to an education and being able to be a part of a school community, even at Cap City. So just wanted to thank you all for the time and just really asking for you folks to help us in remedying the situation at Cap City. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Ms. Byrd had already been called on, correct? Yeah. Yeah, okay. I'm going to make sure that she wasn't on again. Uh, okay, perfect. No other public comment, correct? All right, thank you. And thank you again to all the community members and being patient as we're trying to work through our new way of running meetings for public comment and allowing for the one minute we wanted to make sure we heard from each of you. So thank you again. Item 8.0, Special Presentation 8.1, Resolution Number 3231, Recognition of Week of School Administrators, October 10th through the 16th, Ms. Vegas and Ms. Tiffany Smith Simmons. I don't know which one are you guys on? Maybe both of you?
Yes. Good evening, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar, and Board Members. My name is Christina Vegas, HR Director. I'm here along with my colleague, Dr. Tiffany Smith Simmons, to present here tonight the Resolution Number 3231 that will recognize the week of the school administrators, taking place October 10th through October 16th. Next slide, please. School Administrator's Week is an opportunity for the district to recognize and acknowledge administrators who support students, staff, and community in the support of students' success. This is a week to celebrate, appreciate, and recognize the dedicated and hard-working administrators of the district. Next slide, please. We would like to present to you a video that will commemorate this recognition. If you could play the video for us, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Senora Pyatt at Rosemont High School, and I wanted to say thank you to my admin for doing such a fantastic job for us here. You've made my first year here feel very welcoming. Ms. V Hill, Mr. Predko, Mrs. Hensley, and Mr. Jones, thank you so much. You're doing a great job.
I want to give a shout out to our administrators here at Ferbton Bacon Middle School. Mr. Chambers, Mr. Crenshaw, and of course, the lady who heads it all, Mary Coronado. I think that us opening so smoothly and without as many distractions as possible is because those three try to think of what can happen and have a plan for it. My friends and family across the country and around the world that are educators, they're all just saying how horrible it is going back to school because of this situation or that situation. And our three administrators here at Ferbton Bacon have made sure that those issues were not the problem, that they tried to foresee and have a plan for it, and not only for them, but for the teachers welcoming us, making us feel our worth. Out of all the districts that I have worked for, this is the one that actually makes me feel like I have value, and that is, that goes to my students as well. So thank you, Daniel, Sean, Mary. I really do appreciate everything that you do, everything, and have a great day.
I just want to say that doing your job must not be easy, but you chose a job that displays your leadership and your love for children, and we are so very thankful for your dedication and hard work. You should probably be looking at the camera, but I sincerely mean that, and thank you so much for all your hard work.
Hi, this is Cecilia S. Brandon, Middle School, and I just want to give a big thank you to Mr. Enrique Flores, our school principal, and Mr. Brandon Young, our vice principal, for all the hard work and dedication that you show to our school and staff and students here on campus. Without you, it wouldn't be possible. The stress level would be up more, but with you guys, we make it easy and enjoyable to come to work each and every day. Thank you.
Hi, I just want to say thank you for everything that you're doing for supporting us here at CK and Clatcham. Thank you.
Hi, Sacramento City Unified School District, the Board of Education. My name is Pamela Hunt. I am the proud counselor at Rosa Parks K8 School. I want to give a great, big lion pride shout out to our principal here at Rosa Parks, Mr. Corey Jones, and our assistant principals, Mr. Michael McDaniel and Ms. Jennifer Garcia. They are doing an awesome job with teachers and parents and students. Thank you so much again. Lion pride.
Hi, Marla Van Lanningham. Just wanted to thank you for being a great boss and a great administrator. Please enjoy your celebration week. Treat yourself to something nice. You deserve it during these tough days we've had. Appreciate all you've done for us.
All right, girls, why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
I appreciate her because she always helps people, and she's a great principal.
And I think Ms. Holmes is great because she always helps you if you're lost or something on the first day of school for you.
All right, why do we appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
Because she's the best principal, and she's super kind.
Because she's the best principal that I ever known.
I appreciate Ms. Holmes for helping us when we need it.
All right, Ethan, tell us, why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
I appreciate Mrs. Holmes because she is actually the best. She is the best principal I ever, ever had.
Thank you so much. And what do you think, Angelo? Why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
I appreciate her because of her wisdom and her courage.
Why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes so much?
Kelly Wright. Why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
Uh, because she takes care of the school.
Emilio, why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
Because she's nice.
Ladies, why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
We appreciate Mrs. Holmes because she finds the best solution to leave everyone happy.
Appreciate Mrs. Holmes.
Why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
Because she takes care of the school.
All right, why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
I like the school, and I appreciate her.
I love it. Anyone else? Why do we appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
Because she's really nice, and she's the reason, probably the reason why she let it into the school.
Why do you appreciate Mrs. Holmes?
Because she takes care of us.
Loving Christian.
And she's also nice, and she helps the children safe here.
That was precious. Thank you. That was fantastic. All right, I believe we have one public comment on this item.
Evan Minton.
Evan, are you with us? No? Okay. All right, I will open this up for any board discussion. I first just like to say thank you to all of our administrators throughout our district and your tireless work. I know I drive by school sites on, in the evenings and on the weekends, and I see our cars out there. I know you're working so hard for each of those students, and to hear them say that you treat them like they're their own kids, your own kids, I believe that in each and every single one of you. So thank you so much for your work. Do we have anybody else? All right. With that, I, oh, go ahead, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Pritchett. I do want to just take a moment because I've had the opportunity to meet with many of our principals. They've asked me to connect with them, to hear firsthand some of the challenges that they have faced, and of course, we've all had to kind of just endure the reality that this pandemic has brought on a greater degree of stress and anxieties, and our administrators are out there doing everything they can, and in most cases, doing work that they had not been doing in the past, evening hours, weekend hours, particularly as we're trying to mitigate the spread of COVID, a lot of paperwork, a lot of contacting of families, close contacts, quarantine, contact tracing, and it definitely has taken its toll. I've heard of that directly from our principals. This is the first week we're at site visits. I'm hearing a little bit more of language around things are stabilizing a little bit, but the reality is that those may just be temporary. This is, COVID is still a material threat in our community, of course, we know that, but I just really want to acknowledge that our site leaders, our administrators are doing an amazing job at continuing to ensure that our students are served in person and that are still, that our schools are still functioning as normal as possible in terms of what our students are used to seeing, their ability to access nutrition, their ability to be in space with one another outdoors. And yes, I know that in some ways, it's harder for us as adults to see our students with masks, but the reality is they are there on the ground every single day, and the amount of pivots and adjustments and changes that they've had to make in how we serve lunches, in where we set tables, and how do we make sure that we have enough supervision in our yard. Students are spread out across campuses now, and so all of that has landed on our administrators, and I just want to acknowledge that we see it. I've listened, I've heard, and we're doing everything we can to provide the supports so that they can have their needs met at their local level based on differences in school settings, the physical layout, et cetera. But I do think that this, of course, is very, very appropriate, and I certainly am one to honor their effort in making sure that we can continue to serve our students this year.
Thank you, Superintendent. Well said, and although this is just one week of recognition, just know that we recognize and appreciate you all year round. With that, I'll entertain a motion. All right, student preferential vote. Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia? Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
And Member Philip?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you, and thank you again to our administrators. I was giving you another round of applause for all your work. All right, item 8.2, Resolution Number 3228, Recognition of National School Lunch Week, October 10th through the 16th. Ms. Flores?
Thank you. Good evening, Board Member Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. I'm here today to recognize National School Lunch Week, October 10th through 16th, Resolution 3228. Whereas the National School Lunch Program helps make it possible for our young people to enjoy lunch rich in the essential elements of a good diet and helps them to learn the benefits to be derived from good nutrition. And whereas the serving of a nutritious lunch to 16 million children in 68,000 schools in the U.S. entails the consumption of foods from the entire range of a variety of food groups that are so abundantly and efficiently produced by our farmers. Whereas the National School Lunch Program represents one of the nation's best examples of a cooperative local, state, and federal partnership for the benefit of the most important segment of our population. And whereas in the order to gain recognition from citizens and civic groups for the work of the National School Lunch Program, the Congress by a joint resolution approved October 9th, 1962, has designated the seven-day period beginning on the second Sunday of October in each year as the National School Lunch Week, and has requested the President to issue annually a proclamation calling for the observance of that week. I have, in the next slide, please, sorry, I have, I wanted to recognize that National School Lunch has exciting changes in California, especially this year and beyond. With universal free meals in all California public schools, we now know that childhood hunger is a thing of the past in schools. This year, the state legislator has allocated an additional $650 million to supplement the federal USDA School Meals Program. No longer are children divided into free, reduced, and paid, they are just all eligible for meals while at school. This week marks the 75th year of the National School Lunch Program, the longest-running children's health and welfare program in the U.S. Next slide. Here at the Sac City Unified, we are working to improve access to universal free meals with our new Fresh Food on the Move mobile food truck. This food truck was purchased by two grants from No Kid Hungry, and we have intentions of rolling this out this school year, once we are able to hire and staff at five middle schools for breakfast, ultimately support summer meals and lunches, and all meals served on the mobile food truck will be freshly prepared meals. That is our Resolution 3228, National School Lunch Week.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, I believe, do we have any public comments on this one?
We don't have any public comments, that, we don't have anyone that signed up, but Mr. Gladney raised his hand.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Gladney.
It was, my comment was actually for the School Administrators Week. I want to, you know, just obviously applaud them as well, and the one thing the superintendent forgot to mention was that a lot of them are having to actually substitute classes and multiple classes, and I believe that that's due to our inability or unwillingness to spend available funds early on in the pandemic on subs when they're including allowable expenses. I think that has developed a culture of people not wanting to substitute for our district, and the people that are willing are not qualified. There are people that are on emergency credentials, literally sitting in classes just as an adult body and not engaging the kids. So if that's what we're seeking to do as a district, then, you know, let's continue to pass resolutions that don't have actions tied to it, but I think that if we really honor and respect our school administrators, we could start by assessing existing board policies and ARs and maybe having a plan as to how we're going to get adequate and qualified subs for our kids, so our administrators can actually do the job that they are highly qualified and skilled and love doing, as the video showed. So thank you to all the administrators as well, and I hope that we continue and improve our support for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. All right, do we have any board comment? Member Wu?
I just want to thank all of the food preparers, especially last year when they rolled out food for everybody. It really, really made a difference. And then with--
And then with the food truck at the Farm to Fork, that was the first time it was rolled out. We got great coverage on that. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, here, Member Wu, I completely agree. Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Board President. You know, in addition to celebrating our principals and recognizing all their hard work, I know that Nutrition Services has really, you know, stepped up and leaned in for a while since the pandemic happened, since the shutdown, serving thousands of meals. I think we quickly surpassed 1 million meals served, you know, just a few months into the shutdown last year. I also had the opportunity to go to the Farm to Fork event and I saw the food truck in live. And then I also had the opportunity to enjoy the tacos and the fresh fruit with chamoy and tahin, which was a delicious combination. So, I'm really excited to see this food truck around our school sites with fresh food. And I just want to also extend, just to thank all the chefs who prepared really, really hard for a while over a week so that they can participate in that event. So, thank you to Diana and her team. And I look forward to seeing you fully staffed up so that you can go ahead and have, be able to serve more kids and also be able to ride that food truck around the district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Did you want to add anything?
No, I'm just, we're very blessed and we're just excited as you are, so.
Well, we appreciate all of your hard work and your staff's hard work on this.
Yeah, it's a very difficult staffing time, but once we get it staffed, we will be rolling, that's for sure.
Absolutely. All right, with that. I didn't even add a motion. Hang on a second before I even ask. Wow, come on, you guys are on it. All right, student preferential vote. All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
All right, thank you for all your hard work. All right, resolution, item 8.3, resolution number 3232, recognition of Filipino-American History Month. Mr. Cunero.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nealani Plaza. I'm a senior at West Campus High School as well as a member of the Student Advisory Council, co-representing resolution 3232 with Dr. Mark Cunero from the Youth Development Support Services Department. Hello Superintendent Aguilar and Board of Education. We are here to present the resolution for the recognition of Filipino-American History Month. Next slide, please. Filipino presence in the continental United States was October 18th, 1587, when the first Luzonos Indios arrived in Morro Bay, California on board the Nuestro Señor de las Bronzas, a Manila-built galleon ship. Filipino-American National Historical Society recognized 1763 as the year in which the first permanent Filipino settlement in the United States was established in St. Malo, Louisiana. Filipino-American community is the third-largest Asian-American and Pacific Islander group in the United States with a population of approximately 4 million. Filipino-American students represent 1.3% of the student population in SUSD, 2.7% in Sacramento County, and 2.4% in the state of California.
Next slide, please. Filipino-Americans were central to the formation of the Third World Liberation Front, the TWLF, who were critical to the organizing, mobilization, and success of the 1968 SF State Student Strike, which ultimately led to the development of the country's first ethnic studies program, whose legacy is carried throughout California's ethnic studies graduation requirements in high school, community college, and state university. Filipino-American farmworkers and labor leaders such as Philip Veracruz and Larry Itliang played an integral role in the multi-ethnic United Farm Workers Movement alongside Cesar Chavez, Dolores Huerta, and other Latino workers. Filipino-Americans play an integral role in the healthcare system of the United States as nurses, doctors, and other medical professionals. Filipino-Americans have contributed greatly to music, dance, literature, education, business, journalism, sports, fashion, politics, government, science, technology, the fine arts, and other fields that enrich the United States. It is essential to promote the understanding, education, and appreciation of the history and culture of Filipino-American United States. And with that, we conclude our presentation on resolution 3232 and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I believe we have two public comments.
Yes, first, Mr. Gladney.
Thank you again. If you look at the last whereas statement, you know, again, we have a resolution that speaks towards the importance of an ideal, but an ideal only stays an ideal if we don't have actions and a plan tied to it to implement what we're saying we believe in. To uplift the beautiful information that Mr. Cunero and the student just provided, what is our plan to make sure that we're not just sharing it in a space that's full of adults? How are we going to disseminate that information to our kids that need to know it? This past summer, I took my track team to seaside for a track meet. And on the way back, I intentionally stopped by Cayuga Park, which is on the borderline of Daly City and San Francisco. And it's a special gem, not only for Filipino-Americans, but also just for the city of San Francisco and our region because Demi, who was a, he was actually a landscaper that was assigned there through the Parks and Rec Department from San Francisco. His father had a background in landscaping, but he basically took dead trees and carved them into works of art in a park that was previously just, you know, just burdened with drugs and other illicit activity. But he turned it into a treasure, you know, but the joy and the pride that my Filipino-American athletes had
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. If you could please wrap it up.
in our region is beyond measure. So, I would implore you guys to come with more plans as well for how our students can benefit likewise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Anais Jagori.
You don't have. All right, with that, I'll open it up for board discussion. Do we have any? All right, I will, thank you both for your presentations on this. Very educational. I loved it. With that, I'd like.
So moved. Second.
Okay, gotcha. Motion in a second and student preferential vote. All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Murawski. Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia. Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
I'm gonna say aye, but I want you guys to remember that I don't have a button. So, I wanted to say that I truly appreciate the resolution, but I do stand with Mr. Gladney on the fact that we need to spend some money, put some money behind this and get this out so our students know what's happening.
Thank you, Member Phillips. And if you could just raise your hand on the, like, the icon thing. No, not your real hand, because I want your icon thing. That way, maybe I'll see it on the screen. I apologize for skipping over you. All right. All right, item 8.4, resolution number 3229, California High School Voter Education Weeks, September 13th through 24th, 2021. Do you remember Zeng?
I will be passing this item to Eleanor Love, who is a senior at CKM, and she will give us a brief introduction into this resolution.
Perfect. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Love and as student board member Zeng just mentioned, I am a senior at McClatchy High School and I'm also the Chair of the Sacramento County Youth Commission. I'm here tonight to present with Board Member Zeng, resolution number 3229, which is California High School Voter Education Weeks, September 13th through 24th. I first just like to thank the Sacramento City Unified School District for their interest in educating high school students about pre-registration, registration, and voter outreach. Young people are historically underrepresented in elections and it's super important for them to be aware of their civic opportunities. Pre-registration allows 16- and 17-year-olds to register to vote early. So, the minute they turn 18, they're immediately eligible to vote and it also makes them more likely to do so. My youth commission and I have worked with SUSD, among other local school districts, for the past few years to promote pre-registration among high school students and we're very glad to be continuing the collaboration. And I'll go ahead and read the resolution recognizing the week. Whereas California's Secretary of State, who serves as the state chief elections official, is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections by eligible Californians. And whereas young people play a critical role in our democracy by helping to choose the people who will lead us and by voicing our opinions, their opinions on the issues that are important to them. And whereas 16- and 17-year-olds can pre-register to vote and then automatically become active voters once they turn 18.
And whereas high schools are encouraged to offer voter registration to eligible students with links to the state's online voter registration application through the school website or other electronic communications. And whereas high school administrators are encouraged to name one or more students as voter outreach coordinators to encourage student voter registration during high school voter education weeks. And whereas students are encouraged to participate in our democracy through civics and voter education programs, working as poll workers and by encouraging their peers, family members, and community to register to vote and participate in elections, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Sacramento City Unified School District encourage all district high school to participate in California High School Voter Education Weeks, September 13th through 24th, 2021. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
There's no public comment.
Okay, perfect. Do we have any board comment? Oh, Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm excited to see this resolution. I remember just, you know, way back when, I could not wait to have the opportunity to vote, participate in our democracy. I didn't know anybody growing up who voted because my parents and most of my family, being a first generation, they were all legal residents, so they didn't have the right to vote until they became citizens. But I could just not wait. And since then, at the very least, I always voted. So, I'm very excited to see this. I do have a question regarding how does this align with maybe the state seal of civic engagement? And ensuring that as we're encouraging students to participate in this process, also ensuring that they receive credit towards the state seal of civic engagement or any other type of credit that we can afford them. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
Sure, I could just comment very quickly, Member Garcia. We are actually going to be bringing to the board a presentation about our efforts around the state seal of civic education or engagement and the criteria that we are utilizing and we'll make sure that we incorporate how this will be part of that as well. We anticipate bringing that, I think, as early as the second week in October, actually. We are one of the districts that agreed to pilot the state seal effort and we've had a working group that's been working on potential criteria that we would like to present to the board and we'll make sure that we follow up on that item.
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Thank you. Member Wu.
Well, we've come a long ways since I first voted. I think I had to wait till I was 21. But I'm glad to see that 16- and 17-year-olds can pre-register to vote. That is an important concept and it will, I hope, engage them when they're 18. So, with that, I'll move.
Thank you. All right, I got a motion in a second. Student preferential vote. All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Absolutely, aye.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Before I move on to 8.5, I just wanted to say a special thank you to the students that joined us tonight to help present and all your hard work and dedication. So, thank you for your work. All right, item 8.4, SOR 3, expenditure plan update. Mr. Steven Ramirez-Fong. Good evening.
Good evening, Board President and Board Members, Superintendent colleagues, and also members of the public. My name is Steven Fong. I'm the district's LCAP coordinator and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a number of colleagues who've contributed. Just want to thank them in advance. Tonight, we're presenting a brief update on the SOR 3 expenditure plan. SOR stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Plan. And so, we'll use SOR as a shorthand notation throughout the rest of the presentation. I am aware that this is an agendized item for 10 minutes and I am going to strive to fit in that time. So, as has been noted in past budget presentations, SOR 3 funds are the most recent allocation of emergency relief for the district and these are to address, again, the impact of COVID-19 on schools. Next slide. So, our brief goals tonight are to provide some context, the status update, summarize some of the steps taken and next steps, but then also just to, again, briefly highlight some of the components of the template and what the current draft plan includes. Next slide. It's always important to refocus on our core value and our guiding principle. You know, what I've been trying to do for myself is focus in on an aspect each time I see it. And here tonight, I'm really looking at this phrase, interrupting equity. And this body of funding provides us the chance to interrupt and address some of the economic equities that have been created or worsened by the COVID-19 pandemic. And in fact, that's what the template really calls us to do. Next slide, please. So, just again, for some brief context, and I know this is in part of budget presentations, these funds were part of the American Rescue Plan Act or the ARP. We expect as a district to receive just over $154 million and these are for the time period dating back to March 13th, 2020 and all the way through September of 2024. Next slide, please. But there are two primary areas in which districts, and we must describe our proposed use of fund. The first is the strategies we're going to take to continuously operate schools safely and in person. And then the second bucket are those strategies we're going to use to address the impact of lost instructional time. And it's important to note that that second bucket needs to comprise at least 20% of total funds of the plan. Next slide, please. So, here's a brief timeline of the approval process. You can see that we're going to plan to be back here in two weeks to bring the final plan for adoption. Following that, we do submit the plan to the Sacramento County Office of Education for approval, similar to other large plans. And then after that, the plan really becomes an ongoing implementation and progress monitoring process. It is intended to be a living document. We'll speak to a little later. And that is going to be something that over the next several years, we can revisit, revise as needed. There is an initial checkpoint in February of 2022 where we will be reporting on implementation progress to date and that would be part of the LCAP annual update process. The state is still developing and has yet to approve the final form of a one-time supplement that will be part of that. Next slide, please. And here you can see just the process dating back to the plan's development and the template's release and some of the steps we've taken. Just noting here that we did start the core of the draft and this can be seen in the draft that's attached to the item around several of the actions that were part of the June budget presentation to the board. And then from there, there were additional proposed actions that were part of departmental proposals and then additional actions that were added as part of some prioritized efforts in the district. And so, the draft contains, again, going back to the June process, building around that core and then building out over the last several months. Next slide, please. So, an important note here about alignment, you know, just as was the case with the LCAP and the plans that have been going on in the district over the last few years, they've been building upon each other. And so, this plan is no different. It rests on the strong foundation of planning and community engagements happened through the LCAP, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan, and Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And so, really, we want to. And, and so really, uh, we want to emphasize that a lot of that input that came forward in those plans is included in the draft. Uh, because we want to continue to build. It's not reinventing the wheel. We know that the community's voice through those processes, um, as we emphasize the themes and those themes are, are being brought back here in this plan. Next slide. Um, so in terms of community input, uh, again, building off of the foundation, uh, we have been engaging and this is still ongoing with some of our community, uh, committees and groups as well as posting the plan and, and taking open comments. And so that's still in progress. Um, and we are going to share in the next few slides here, uh, some of the highlighted themes. Next slide please. Uh, so here you can see that, um, if you do, go back to the LCAP process and some of our recent planning, you're, you're going to see the echoes. There's some real similar themes here that, um, that we're seeing, um, recur over the different engagement processes. So we want to highlight the fact that, uh, we, we do see that trend. So here you're going to see themes such as, uh, mental health support. Uh, you know, you're going to see things like enrichment, uh, high quality options for instruction, uh, when the student's not in person, and really individualized supports such as tutoring and more instructional aids. Uh, next slide please. Uh, you know, certainly here, uh, emphasis on COVID testing and then the effective practices around that. Increased supports for student group and again, that individualized learning plan that we've heard about. Um, recruitment, retention and support of staff has been an ongoing theme. Uh, and then here again, um, partnering with community-based organizations to be able to provide students opportunities that we might not be able to provide alone as a district. Next slide please. Uh, this slide just shows a little bit of what the plan looks like and in terms of the template. Uh, if someone, uh, is interested in digging in more, of course, the draft is attached and you can see how we've filled out some of these sections. Uh, but we did want to highlight here that this is the first plan of, of its type, these one-time plans where they've really called out as a state, um, the need to describe progress monitoring. And, and so that's an exciting, uh, piece of, of work because that does align to the LCAP work. And, and so if you go into our draft plan, you can see the proposed methods to monitor progress over time for each of the proposed action. Next slide please. Uh, so for anyone interested, um, here are some of the various ways that you can still provide comment. Uh, there's a link here that will include the draft as well as a Google form for submitting comment. You can also send emails directly, um, or send standard mail. So all of those methods are, are welcome. Next slide please. Uh, so the next three slides just, uh, provide a little bit of a high level summary of some of the actions, uh, that are proposed uh, inside of the plan. And without reading it word for word, you can see here, there's some, um, high level um, categories around, uh, safe in-person learning such as health services, uh, COVID mitigation. And then, you know, facilities projects that would support air quality or distance opportunities. Next slide please. And in the area of addressing the fact of instructional, lost instructional time, um, you see again themes of things we've seen in recent processes, um, that individualized reports, um, you know, before, after school programs. We have, uh, social workers, student support center staff. We've heard a lot about that. Um, and then certainly, uh, things such as SEL, we're sort of justice specialists here are appearing as a focused action. And then also, um, anti-racist materials and curriculum. Next slide please. And, and then lastly, in the additional actions, um, again, themes such as college and career readiness, counseling, full psychologists, um, various trained specialists for ELD, ed tech, um, an additional support for here for nutrition staff and staff recruitment retention, of course. And then also a host of, uh, proposed actions for special education. And I just want to call out that, um, these slides, it's not coincidental that you're seeing very similar things to the community input slides because many of the actions, um, that are being proposed are again built off of past media input and current community input. And so they do have that strong linkage as well as to the LCAP and other planning processes. Next slide please. Um, so this and the next slide just have some key notes. Um, and, and this is just a clarification here. There are two plans related to S R three. Um, the one we're talking about here tonight is the expenditure plan. There is another plan called the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. It's a distinct plan, um, and it is updated every six months and really focuses more on the, um, safe operation and responding to public health impact. Uh, the S R three expenditure plan, which we're talking about tonight, is, uh, expected to be a living document. And we are going to be engaging with it over the next several years as we, um, find the best way to utilize these funds and potentially need to, uh, you know, pivot a- a- as, as, as needed. Next slide please. Uh, and here we just want to highlight because we're, um, seeing you here before we've seen you for any LCAP, um, items that the state is, uh, moving away from the use of the term stakeholder. Uh, and you can see at the bottom, we've cited a recent state board of education item. And just want to note that, um, feedback from the American communities indicated this term is, um, found to be offensive. As it notes, a practice of staking a claim to land. And so the state is engaged in the process of trying to identify an appropriate term. Um, and we're, um, for now, as you've seen this presentation, using phrases like community groups, educational partners has been used. And so we're really going to, um, do our best to focus in on some common terminology, but also the state to see what they might recommend. Next slide please. Uh, so for next steps, we're going to continue engaging with the community. Uh, we're going to, you know, work with executive cabinet leadership to prioritize actions, determine final allocations, um, and then develop that final plan that we bring back to the board and prior to then going to our, uh, county office education and, and then moving into that actual implementation and progress monitoring. Next slide please. Uh, so that concludes our presentation. Uh, I, we're here, here to answer any questions and certainly, um, your input because we are still in development of the plan. And, um, all input is valuable. So thank you.
Great, thank you. I believe we have three live public comments. Terrence Gladney.
Uh, thank you, Stephen, for your leadership in, in this space as well as many other spaces. Um, I, I truly appreciate your authentic voice that, um, many of us educational partners have not grown accustomed to from the district or staff side. So thank you for that, uh, breath of fresh air. Board members, as you guys, uh, consider this, um, I would like you guys to consider that in, in previous years, as we consider cuts, they most often start closest to students. So although this is one-time funding, it's an opportunity to restore some of those things that have been taken away for many years. Um, and although I do realize they are one-time funds, it's an opportunity to really just get our kids comfortable with being back out in public again. Um, I would also implore you guys to consider having a plan B so that in any event we have, uh, funds, um, allocated but go unused. After a period of monitoring, we have a backup plan that could hopefully achieve some of the same impact. So if we're planning to hire psychologists and counselors, but, you know, staffing just isn't available, perhaps we just provide more adult leaders on campus such as additional coping coaching stipends, um, campus monitors, people that can still be close to our students and have a safe voice and presence on those campuses. Um, and, and also I just, uh, hope that you guys do realize that a lot of this does align with the LCAP, that you guys have appointed members to that body, uh, to the pack. So if you guys are considering where your voice is, you know, trust those voices you guys have appointed to that body. And you guys can additionally, you know, attend some of the meetings to, uh, to have visibility to that. So thank you again, Stephen, and, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. All right, I think, uh, that was actually our only comment on this item. Do we have any board comments? This is an informational item, by the way. Member Morowski.
Thank you, thank you. Um, uh, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, um, thank you, Stephen. It was, uh, it was interesting, uh, to hear you present on this and, and I'm glad too because, um, you know, with your experience in the LCAP and seeing how all these plans align is very, uh, refreshing. And, um, I, I'm really proud of the, the work that went into this. So just kudos on, you know, on the development of this plan. This is not, yeah. It's not easy to spend money. It's not easy to plan to spend, uh, this amount of money. So, um, I, I really appreciate all the work. Uh, just a couple of quick comments. Um, I just, uh, there's so many things in here that are really exciting. Love to see the student support, um, all the student opportunities that are in here. I think that's, that's incredible. Um, I love seeing the, the program where we're, we're talking about growing our own, um, teachers and, you know, supporting our classified staff to, um, to, with, with, uh, scholarships or funds. I don't know exactly how that program works, but, um, I was really excited to see that in there. So I was very supportive of that. Um, one, uh, one question I had, you know, there's, there's so many, so many great things in here, just wondering, you know, especially when I look at how, um, the, the measurement and the tracking of outcomes is really great. Who's going to do that? It seems like, you know, we can't, I know, we can't spend this amount of money and oversee it properly with the, the administrative infrastructure we have. So is there a, like, when, when the funds are listed out, is there like an administrative um, expectation, uh, like as a percentage of that or something? Because I, I, it just, there's, that's a lot of work. So just wondering how that's all going to work and who's going to be, who's going to be, um, responsible for that reporting and tracking.
Like, I can provide an initial answer. Would certainly invite colleagues to jump in. Uh, I mean, one, one first answer I would say is, you know, because of the alignment with the LCAP, a lot of the, the progress monitoring steps are those that you find inside of some of those LCAP measurable outcomes, those metrics. And so, you know, there is work we're already doing, which, which I think is, you know, to your point, whole purpose of aligning all those together, it is the same work. And, and in other cases, these are things that staff are excited about for their own department. You know, so when we ask staff, tell us how are you going to progress monitor? These are things that they brought forward to say, here's how we want to be able to track whether or not we're successful. Um, which to the other point you're making, uh, I, I know that with grants, there are indirect costs affiliated with them. And, and so that's something I would defer to budget folks on in terms of what might be the ultimate indirect cost for managing this. Uh, but I'm not aware at this point of any specific, uh, you know, bucket of things that is going to go into that. Um, but in terms of progress monitoring, I think really is because of the alignment going to be embedded with our larger body of work. And it's going to be part of that district effort to really, um, have more accountability to our action.
Member Morowski, I, it has been a long time, so I'm going to ask, uh, CBO Rose Ramos to remind us, but, um, if you remember, we did have some principles that we put forth um, uh, during the June adoption period. And we did talk about the importance of setting aside a certain percentage of our funds, uh, to create the infrastructure to make sure that we manage the funds properly and held ourselves accountable. So if I can ask Ms. Ramos, just to remind us a bit if, if she has that, uh, handy for us.
Yes, good evening, uh, board members and superintendent. Um, yes, I do recall that. And, um, uh, I believe it may have been about ten percent and I'm looking for that table now. And perhaps, um, as we move along the presentation, I'll be able to pull it up and I can, uh, let you know what, what that amount was.
Okay, I, it's, you know, it, and, and that's, that's, that's fine. I just, I do, I do recognize how how stretched our, our current staff is and just a, a ton of more new projects, more things to oversee, more, I mean, it's all good stuff. I just want to make sure that, that we are along with the, the programs, that we actually have the ability to manage it. And particularly, you know, on, on your side, um, Ms. Ramos as well, um, with the, with the additional budgeting and oversight that that requires. So just, uh, cognizant of that, um, super exciting. And, um, I guess my last thing is I'm excited to see all the, the, you know, the kind of the one-time expenditures of funds that will last, you know, like shade structures and, and other things that we're doing now, but will, um, be able to benefit uh, from for many years. So just encourage us to think, uh, to think if we do have, you know, those funds to, to think about those one-time, um, investments that, that can pay off over many years. And one thing that I would just put a pitch in, and I don't know if this fits exactly into, um, the, the spending buckets here, but there, you know, we have, we have one-time, um, cost for curriculum that is extremely outdated, that I think speaks to the same kind of, um, anti-racist and, you know, uh, culturally responsive, um, practices and teaching that we want to put forward in our school. So it would just encourage us to think about, you know, whether, whether, um, um, improvement and adopting new curriculum would fit into that, that bucket as well, because that would be, um, that would be a great one-time thing to be able to do to benefit from our students for many years. Thank you so much for, uh, for everything that went into this.
All right, Member Garcia.
Um, yes, thank you, um, for the, um, for the presentation. It's, um, very exciting to see a lot of these, um, proposals. Um, and that we actually have, you know, although one-time funds, that we actually have funds to, um, to make them, um, a reality. So I just, I'm just really excited about that. Um, I, I do appreciate that this continues to layer on the LCAP, um, so that all of the, um, funds that the district is getting continues to support the LCAP and the work of the, um, of not only, um, the staff, but also that the parent advisory, um, committee, right? So everything is aligned. Um, I do, um, have a couple of questions, um, in terms of when we might see dollar amounts and where we might see number of FTEs, because there's, there's a lot where we're hiring. We're going to need additional people. So I'm just wondering, when do we know how many, for example, um, psychologists, how many, um, I have highlighted other, uh, maybe it's the child welfare and attendance specialist. How many more people do we need to carry out the work over the lifetime of the, um, of the funds? Because we have so many pots. And, um, I think because they're all focusing on, this is what, like the eighth plan that you've developed this year and, and, and growing. So, um, so they're all sort of funding the same efforts. And I'm just trying to figure out how much of LCFF ongoing funds, X amount, how many, how much of S R one, two, or three funds X amount? So just trying to, to, um, keep that in mind as, as we, as we continue to measure, as we continue to pivot, as we continue to, um, because either, um, the efforts are not resulting in positive, um, outcomes or because our needs change. So, um, just trying to figure out how that's all going to work out, recognizing that we have limited staff capacity. So how does that, how all that work gets done? And I heard your answer, which is encouraging, but it doesn't mean that you don't need additional, um, support. So I do have some specific questions. Um, I don't know if you wanted to make some comments on that, but I do have some, um, specific questions too. You don't have to.
I would only offer briefly, I think staff is engaged in that exact analysis that you spoke to, which is, you know, assessing which positions are already partially funded by S R one. And so in some cases, we're looking at extending these positions out for years two and three of the grant span and not all three years. Uh, and then also, I'm really asking, uh, our, our colleagues to look at the feasibility of hiring, you know? And that's something the superintendent's guided us to do, within a, is there a reasonable job market? To hire X number of staff for some of these. And how have we farred in recent past influence in these positions? So if we've found that we've been very effective in filling positions, then it's reasonable to expect we can hire more. And if not, then it may not be, um, you know, prudent to set such a high goal of, of hiring a lot of staff. Um, and we do have some initial numbers and those dollars are going to be, um, refined by, you know, executive cabinet and leadership um, as the input keeps coming in.
I appreciate that.
Member Garcia, if I can just mention in the actual, uh, the draft of the, of the current proposal, uh, you'll see that we do make a notation about the staffing shortages and the staffing challenges. And so what you're asking for is in fact, something that is top of mind and, and, and we will have to really think about the feasibility and viability of whatever we would like to spend some of these resources on. You know, whether we, 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 we think that we can find staffing to, uh, fulfill those positions.
Right, I know it's, it's hard to hire right now and it's happening all over the state, so we're not alone. But I just want to make sure that whatever barriers we may have, we, we overcome those. And recognizing that, um, we still have stay and rescind with the Sacramento County Office of Education. So, um, we have all these goals on paper, but then we also have this oversight from the county in terms of how we spend our dollars. So, um, I just think that we just need to know, um, we just need to stay informed of, of what are some of the things that we can't do because of that? Because that is, um, that is a real thing where we can't just go out and hire as many people as we want because we have to, you know, work through that process of, um, stay and rescind. But I do, um, have some questions about, for example, the, um, ensure that every sixth grade student has has the opportunity to go to Sly Park. That's a really exciting opportunity for our students. I know that many PTOs, PTAs work really, really hard to, to raise money so that they can support their students at their schools to do this. So I think the communication to our school sites and our PTAs and our PTOs is going to be really important. So the, to the extent that they're raising money, that it's not something they need to, 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 you know, to keep on their list because it's something that the district will, will offer. Same thing with, I didn't see it here that I recall, but athletics. Another, another great opportunity to support our students. And I think I had one other maybe comment. And oh, on the college and career readiness at multiple levels. There's one in middle school, but there's also one in K through six. Also being able to be intentional about sharing the college savings account information and resolution that we just adopted because that is going to be a tremendous opportunity for our families. So that it's part of those efforts, making sure that our families get signed up for that. Because that's free money from the state. And then lastly, on the staff recruitment and retention, very excited about this opportunity and to grow our own. And, and we also have another plan that you're probably going to be working on. I think that's due at the end of the year via the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant and finding out how those dollars may be able to really support this particular action. You know, I've always thought maybe of a CTE pathway available that really is, creates a pipeline to grow our own, that is staff that is diverse, that mirrors our, our school, our, our student population. And, you know, I think science has proven that, or research has proven that often it's the first generation students, the first in their family to go to college that often come back to their communities and teach, and they stay in those communities. So I'm trying to figure out how, how to, how to leverage all of those variables in our favor so that we can support our, our students and our future teachers and retain the ones that we have. So, so thank you so much for all this work. I really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Thank you again for the presentation. This is an informational item.
Just very quickly want to just thank the board for acknowledging our efforts being led by Stephen Fong. But in particular, just the acknowledgement of the role of the LCAP as sort of our kind of foundational anchor, living document. Because as you know, we put a lot of effort, a lot of education partners, community partners that spent countless hours, some of you served on the LCAP pack at some point. And the amount of energy that went into taking a document that maybe has been perceived, still is perceived as a compliance document, and instead saying, this is what we want to accomplish over the next few years. And us then treating it as the anchored document for everything else that we do is exactly what we envisioned. And so I'm just thankful to the board that that is how you see it. Because then it allows us to penetrate that message into our system across all of our school sites. That that is going to be how we are expecting, how we, how we expect that, that document be treated as a living document that's driving the instructional vision of this district. And so we, we're going to continue, you're going to continue to hear that, and I just appreciate your, your attention.
Thank you, Superintendent. And yes, thank you for all the work that has been put into this. All right, like I said, this is an informational item and it will be brought back for future updates. All right, item nine point O, Board Workshop, Procedure Plan and Other Initiatives. Nine point one, Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Service Plan to Address Significant Disproportionality. We have Giovanni.
Yes, perfect. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, great. How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
Good, good. All right. So good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide you with an update to our comprehensive coordinated early intervening or CCAS plan to address our significant disproportionality as a district. My name is Giovanni Linares and I serve as our sub-director. This evening I have the, I have the privilege of presenting with members of our stakeholder team. They are Mrs. Toni Tinker, as well as Ms. Kristen Jordan. Next slide, please. Perfect. So we'd like to start with a reminder and review of our core value and guiding principle, which we recognize that our system is inevitable, excuse me, inequitable by design. And we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to, to learn, grow, and reach their greatness. So next slide, please. Perfect. Our agenda for this evening will provide us with an overview of what is significant disproportionality. Our identification of where we are significantly disproportionate. The programmatic improvement process that our team has engaged in. Our key findings from that process and some next steps in our work. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of words on this slide, but essentially significant disproportionality occurs when for three years, students of a particular race or ethnicity are identified as children with disabilities, are identified within a particular category of eligibility for special education, are placed in a particular educational setting, like a separate classroom or non-public school, or suspended expelled as a disciplinary measure at a higher rate than their peers of other races. So put it in another way, disproportionality refers to the over-representation in one year. Significant disproportionality refers to over-representation for three consecutive years. So as a district, we are significantly disproportionate in the identification of African-American students as meeting eligibility for special education in the area of emotional disturbance, as well as suspensions of African-American students with disabilities greater than 10 days out of school. So when a district becomes significantly disproportionate, a four-phase systematic improvement process is prescribed to address that significant disproportionality. This four-phase process includes the development of a leadership team and a stakeholder team, the analysis of district quantitative, as well as qualitative data to identify key findings and root causes for that significant disproportionality. The development of a 27-month plan to address the needs identified in that data analysis and root cause, as well as the implementation, evaluation, and the sustaining of that plan beyond that 27-month period and beyond the utilization of those federal set-aside dollars for that 27-month period. So as a district, we've been using a pamphlet to share and collaborate as a group and welcome more opportunities for the community and public to share and participate in, in reading the documents, asking questions, participating in our stakeholder team as well. Next slide, please. So in our programmatic improvement process, our technical assistance facilitator, Dr. John Eiler, he and I presented back in May when we looked at our last year's plan. Well, he has helped us go through the process by having our group use our own CowPads data to guide our findings and discussions. So we submitted, it's called an NYU workbook. And so we, we take three sets of data points that we submit to the state yearly. And that data is kind of reformulated and it provides us questions around a, a number of different measures. We look at data based off of race and ethnicity. We look at identification areas. We look at grade levels and we look at things like age of entry into special education. Who provided the referral for special education to see if there are any trends and things that we need to take into consideration when we start to look at what are some of the root causes for why we are significantly disproportionate? Our team also inventoried some of our major initiatives across the district and discussed how they are, how well they're known or implemented through each of our lenses as either a district leader, a site leader, a parent, a community member, and how well we feel that, that they're known across the district. We also reviewed our system of supports across the district. So we, we simply asked questions like, so if you have a struggling reader at your school site, what does that look like? What are some of the interventions that are provided? And we recharted them using our JAM board and started to identify, are, do we have consistency across our system? Or do we not? Is that an opportunity? Does that, that tell us more about our data? We also reviewed various, reviewed and discussed how various district and community organizations have focused on this, have supported this, and have historically provided input and guidance to address these areas of systemic concern. This is an area where we'd like to continue to expand on. Our data is telling us part of a story, but it's not telling us the entire story. And we know that an important aspect of getting a complete picture of where we are as a district and where we need to go is to collaborate with our community to help us tell more of, of that story. In order for us to, to, to develop and implement a successful and sustained plan. Lastly, we reviewed board policies and administrative regulations in the area of special education. The systemic improvement process has identified a number of board policies and administrative regulations that specifically address special education. Our team looked at, do we have that policy in the district? Does it even exist in our district? If so, when was the last time it was updated? Does it currently align with current laws and practices, best practices? Would we say that this is how we're implementing this board policy or administrative regulation through the lens of each of our experiences here? And then what recommendations, recommendations do we have to update and better reflect those board policies? So they are indicative of our needs and our current practices? Next slide, please. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Tinker to speak to our findings for this year and some of our hypothesized root causes.
Good evening all. It's been quite some time since I've been able to speak with the board, but I'm happy to be with you this evening. To give everybody a little bit of background, I came to this board via the African-American Advisory Board, your own Vincent Harris, who is now not with us, came to our board and asked if some of the African-American Advisory Board members would work with this group. And I volunteered to go ahead and move forward and work with this group. I come to this group as a parent of five littles in this district. And also my work as an African-American, Pan-Africanist, and my work with student groups, both at the county office of ed, with CDE and other sources that fall into these categories of looking into these areas. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the key findings that we did as we began as a team with all of our expertise to look at these key findings. And one of the things that I really, really want to point out is that these key findings really didn't tell us much of what we already didn't know. As Stephen pointed out, many of these findings have been coming up over and over and again. And some of the things that he pointed out is that we didn't want to reinvent the wheel, but we wanted to look at them to see where in fact they were coming from. So there were a lot of sources for us to see that repeatedly over and over again, what came about was that there was a lack of comprehensive interventions equitably across the district. So as we looked at, at every district, what we realized as we looked at both the district level, but then we looked at all of the sites, that the district didn't have one specific language that was coming out. The comprehensive interventions were given in vagueness and generality. And as they came down, each site was dealing with this in its own interpretation. So each side had a different way in which these comprehensive interventions played out for it. And then the information going back up was coming in at the same kind of rate. There is a lack of consistent disciplinary practices. We talk about this and we've talked about this over and over. When we talk about African-American students, we talk about the suspension rate, who's being suspended, the high rate of suspension rates, how are our suspensions laying out? We realized that many of our community partners had already addressed this, right? A specifically Black Parallel School Board came and talked about, well, how are suspensions playing out if it isn't the traditional suspension, right? Suspending you, sending you home? Why are we keeping track of those suspensions? How are those suspensions playing out on campus? How many of those are turning into suspensions that escalate as they go on? Because the student didn't come into compliance on the site? Are they getting sent home? Are they in OCS? Or where are they lent? So those were our key findings during COVID. The key findings that we have from 2021, as we go forward, told us the same things that we saw both in 2019, when the African-American Advisory Board looked at the disproportionality and specifically looked at the disproportioning of African-Americans. We looked in 2020, as I just said, we saw the disproportionality again, which led us into this third year. The key findings from 2021, the overall identification rate of students with disability in this district is 16.1. And that's higher than the state average of 12%. When we looked at it by student group, African-American students identified at the rate of 21.1%. Mind you, that this is my wheelhouse. We have about 5,700 students, families in our district and of African-American students. And we represent 21, 24.1% of those in disability. So we know that that is an equitable, high amount of disproportionality rate in special education. And American Indian students identified at the rate of 26.1%. Their population is even lower than African-Americans within this district. And here we are, we have them at 26.1. We also identified that children of color and students in poverty were overrepresented in special education. The other marker that we looked at, as Giovanni pointed out, is that we were looking at grade levels. And we noticed that students in third grade were more likely to enter special education under the eligibility of emotional disturbance or other health impairments. And how that broke out and how we continue to look at that has yet to go across. But we began to formulate and come across some root causes. There became a lack of consistent academic behavioral and social emotional interventions across the district that contributes to the disproportionality identification and discipline of students based upon race and ethnicity. So really to break that down, what we're talking about is that we saw inconsistent practices across. As I said, each site was dealing with the academic, behavioral, and social emotional interventions in the way, in a way that each site knew how. There was not a one directive, one conversation. And many of those things point back to some of the next things that I'm going to turn over to Giovanni to talk about, and he talked about a few minutes ago, about our policies being updated, about looking at through a cultural lens, looking at through best practices of social emotional interventions and cultural lenses of where that child is and where they've been. I'm going to turn it back over to Giovanni and continue the conversation.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Tinker. Mrs. Tinker has taught me a lot throughout this, throughout this process. And what, one of the key lessons that I'm very appreciative of is the importance of language and the language that we use. So when we have this root cause of lack of consistent academic behavior and social emotional interventions, it's not to communicate that consistent intervention means the same interventions. And that we're looking for a homogeneous sort of outcome for, for all of our students. Our goal is to engage each of our school communities to better learn how we may need to grow as a system, as an organization, to provide appropriate interventions for each group. As our data indicates, we are significantly disproportionate for African-American students, but our American Indian students are right on the cusp of being significantly disproportionate as well. Our Hispanic Latino students are, are moving towards significant disproportionality. And we have to engage more and more of our community and more of our school sites to understand what it is we can build consistency on in order to in order to provide that opportunity for the inequitable distribution of resources and interventions. So I'm going to move on to the next slide. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jordan, who's going to talk a little bit about our next step.
Thank you, Gio. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Aguilar. I am grateful to be here and this work is meaningful to me as a mom of an African American student with exceptional needs within the district. So I'm going to talk a little bit about next step. We plan to continue stakeholder team meetings. And as part of that, we are looking to expand the team to include more voices. We are also going to be reviewing the results of the special education file review, the NCRA surveys and continuing a review of board policies and then doing some action planning. So potential action items that we have discussed as a stakeholder group and are looking into more. We are looking into, as one of our potential acts and items, having sexified, unified, complete and appreciative inquiry with a multidisciplinary team to develop a plan for collaborative, comprehensive, district-wide system of interventions, including a study of discipline practices, which would include suspension and expulsion data. This inquiry process will, through the lens of our significant disproportionality, review current initiatives, identify connections between these initiatives, and identify both where we have strength, which I know we do as a district, and areas for growth, which of course, like any district, we also do. An additional potential action item we have identified is implementing a comprehensive system of interventions in equitable manner. And that would include professional learning, the exploration of restorative disciplinary practices, professional e-learning modules, site-based coaching and support, and then student-driven support. We also think that it's important to monitor and evaluate our system of interventions through the lens of significant disproportionality. The real question is, how do we make our plan sustainable beyond the CCSE plan and integrate it into both our MTSS and LCAP? Gio, I'll turn it back over to you now.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And with that, that's kind of a highlight of where we are with our planning pieces. We do have our plan completed that identifies these three broad areas of sort of deliverables, which is an appreciative inquiry that kind of identifies where we are and where we want to go. And then our desire for a consistent and comprehensive system of interventions, as well as a monitoring and evaluation plan for those interventions. What we want to do is continue the conversation and welcome others to come and help us with the action planning. So it is tailored to the specific needs of different groups throughout the district. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Collins. Do we have any public comment? Terrence Gladney.
I don't believe that I have public comment on this item, but I will take the opportunity to say thank you to Mr. Lenares and the entire team. And I hope that you guys continue the great work and come forward with some additional recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. Do we have any board comments or questions? All right, we thought it's informational item. And I look forward to having you guys back. Thank you so much for this presentation. All right, item 9.2, facilities master plan update. Ms. Ramos, Mr. Hickey and Ms. Aseda, how are you?
Good evening. Thank you, President Pritchett and board members. And tonight, we're just going to present to you another little workshop on the facility master plan and allow time for questions. With that, if you could please start the PowerPoint. Thank you. If you could advance to the next slide. And then for this evening, we're going to go over a case study, just to provide you with an example of some of our schools that may not fall into some of the the areas that we talked about as far as the facility master plan categories are concerned and how those will be dealt with. We'll spend a little bit of time going over a project timeline as far as capital projects are concerned, and then move into summary next steps and then turn it over to the board for questions and answers. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lee Sada.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Ramos. And of course, good evening to board members and Superintendent Aguilar, members of the community. If we can go to the next slide, please. As Ms. Ramos said, we wanted to just provide you with another case study as an example of the type of project that you had pointed out to us in previous meetings, you know, how we would receive funding if it wasn't identified as one of our, what we're calling our visionary projects. So this is a case study of a middle school here in town. When we look at the Berkeley Opportunity Map, which is the map that we're using to help us identify neighborhoods and the resources available to those neighborhoods, it shows that this school is located in an area that does have very high resources, the highest level of resources, in fact, available. The students that attend that school are not identified in the LCAP as needing additional scaffolds or help. And in fact, this school is ranked 73rd of 80 in terms of its needs or the students that go there and their learning needs. From a facilities condition index point of view, which is, you know, obviously the state of the facility that we've spoken to you about, this school ranks in fair condition. It's 29th out of 30, so in the top third. And then finally, in terms of its utilization rate, it's currently at 88%. It's projected to grow over the next five years. It's essentially at full capacity. And because of these factors, it does not qualify for the equity index or FCI categories. Next slide, please. However, it does have needs like all of our schools. And you can see, and if you recall previous presentations we've given to you, we have the six educational assessments on a point scale. This has varying scores depending on the area that we're looking at. And you can see in some areas, it's as low as 1.07 out of five and as high as 4.0 out of five. But each of these pedals can be improved with a combination of funds, including bond funds and some of the funds that were mentioned earlier by Stephen Ramirez Fong in his excellent presentation about the use of SRR3 funds. And let's go to the next slide, please. But just as a reminder, just in terms of the facilities condition index, we wanted to remind everybody that schools, all schools will receive some sort of funding. And this school will qualify for $4 million of funding to address the high priority needs of the facilities, including the top three categories of safety, performance and integrity and accessibility. As we've spoken and shared with you in previous meetings, those are areas that could potentially lead to viability for the district. And so those, all schools will receive funds to improve and take care of those areas that were identified as part of the facilities condition index and the work that DLR Group and their subconsultants performed. So this school will specifically receive just under $4 million of bond funds to address those issues. Next slide, please. So we wanted to give you a summary of, again, a school that doesn't qualify in terms of the equity index that we've been speaking about before, but just a way of showing you that and demonstrating that schools in all parts of the city, you know, will receive funding, in this case, bond funds of $4 million to address the FCI priority A1 project category, which is trip and fall hazards, roof repairs. These are examples of some of the categories mentioned before, electrical transformer replacements. In fact, these specific things that we're listing here came out of the facilities condition report. And we wanted to give you an example of what, again, in this particular case study, the type of items that will be repaired. Again, as was presented earlier this evening, there are other funds and other sources of funding for things like HVAC improvements. And they can be addressed with Esser or potentially COVID relief funds. And then finally, other areas that we've spoken about improving would include building management systems and CO2 sensors. And again, those can be addressed with Esser funds. So the point that we're trying to make here is that, in addition to our bond sources for funding, these other one-time sources of funds can help us by stretching the bond funds further. And again, emphasizing the fact that schools, even if they're not identified in the equity index, will still receive funding in order to see improvements. Next slide, please. There was a question about project timeframes and sort of in the context of what are the next steps. But we wanted to, again, emphasize that there's two different types of projects. Project type A, which are anything from, you know, these small relief or small repair projects that we have, where we might have, you know, a month or two of procurement timing and then the construction itself or the repair itself may take anywhere from, you know, maybe a month to as much as eight months. You know, for example, if we had to repair a roof, it's going to fall in between, probably in the four to five month range, depending on the size of the roof. And we compare that to a capital project, which would be a much more significant upgrade or modernization or, in fact, could even be a full replacement. And those projects are typically the vision projects or type B projects. They have, we're showing a few more of the phases, but kind of in general, you'll have a design phase of 10 to 14 months. You'll have DSA review. Again, this is the equivalent of the building department of, say, six to eight months. We still have to have a procurement or a bidding phase for the general contractors. And then, of course, construction can take anywhere from, you know, a year and a half to two years. So when you add up that total time, from the day that you approve a project, and if it's one of these major projects, it can be three to four years before we're actually opening the building. And so again, we're trying to encourage us to do a very thorough explanation of the tools that we're asking you to prove, while at the same time, understanding kind of the overall context and why we would like to continue to move the process forward. Next slide, please. So in terms of the next steps, we're hoping after today's listening session, where we can continue to hear your feedback about the overall planning tool that we are proposing, is that we'd like to bring the tool for approval at the October 21st meeting. And this would include the web tool that we've presented several times now and the overall methodology to approve the project prioritization. Now, after that's approved in October, Ron and his team will sit down and will pull out the use of the tool to come up with a specific project list. And that will come back to you as a facility spending plan, which will include both type A projects and type B projects. And we hope to achieve that by the January, February timeframe of 2022. And then we would ask, of course, for that approval. And, you know, at that point, we would be able to incorporate in some of the feedback that we receive, not only from you, but also from the community through the community forums that we've already sponsored and that we hope to continue to sponsor. And of course, as soon as it's safe, we'd like to get back out there into the community and have additional in-person community forums. But again, we wanted to just kind of show you what the steps are in terms of the next steps so that we can put that overall timeframe in context. So if we're coming back to you in early 2022 with a major vision project, it's going to be three years from that point before that project is actually completed. So just, you know, trying to place this in the overall context. And then finally, I guess I would say on a previous slide, I just neglected to mention, but some of the ways that we can improve our campuses are fairly simple. And some of those scores that we showed you in the equity, in the overall educational assessments, can be improved by things as simple as more flexible furniture or, you know, having much more accessible color on the walls of the school. So there are lots of ways that we can really improve the learning outcomes of our students using those educational assessments in a way that would allow our staff to come back to you and give you those specific proposals. So finally, next slide, please. We've had several workshops now. We've had several opportunities for two buys. We would invite you here to give us your feedback, any final thoughts? And then again, we hope to bring back the tool for approval at the next board meeting. That's our goal anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have public comment. We have Terrence Gladney for public comment.
Thank you again, and thank you to Dr. Sada, Mr. Hickey and Nathaniel. You know, for you guys continued advocacy on behalf of all of the core planning facilities, committee members. In previous presentations of the master plan draft, perceived sentiment from the board is not in alignment with what equity really is. I've heard things such as how do we make sure every school gets something? How do we make sure that we still are able to choose which projects are prioritized? And that sounds a lot like, how do we continue to do what has always been done? And if we are indeed trying to unearth and turn over this system of inequity, we have to do things different. I'm excited because on the heels of the presentation of the SRR3 plan, you guys stated a commitment to align spending and projects with the LCAP. And that's exactly what this plan and this tool has been designed to do. There's three current members of the LCAP PAC that sit on the core planning facility committee. So I would hope that you guys would be consistent in your choice to align your spending priorities and methodologies with the LCAP as it is stated. And that is what has been presented to you is. There was a statement as well at the last presentation about the migratory nature of our district being programmatic choice. If we take Sutter, which is the unspoken school that, you know, we don't talk about, there's only like 300, around 300 neighborhood students that attend that school. But there's no program that exists at Sutter Middle that doesn't exist at other middle schools. So programmatic choice is based on those false narratives that continue to be pushed forward, including by our community and obviously our board. So if we really unpack the truth, then the neighborhood schools could be restored. And I hope that you guys, you know, stand courageously enough to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
This is Mokash Mary. Just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. What I don't understand is that, you know, the public hasn't been able to actually see the SCUSD plan website where all of this is laid out. I've tried to go there and I get a message saying that I need the password. Actually, I didn't work, but let me see if I can get it working in a minute. But what I wanted to say is, I hope we can approve more money. We know we have $3.5 billion of needs. We only approved a bond of $750 million. We need this board to put another bond on the ballot. They'll actually meet the needs. If you don't, we're failing our kids. And so asking this board to think big, go big, and at the very least, look and money on looking at polls to see if it's feasible or not. That's $30,000. That is very, very, very well spent because it could bring us millions of dollars in upgrades that we desperately need. So instead of fighting over a small pie, I say, let's expand the pie and make it bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. No other speakers? Okay, we have Member Villa.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, okay. I just wanted to thank you guys for the presentation. I know we have spoke before in the two buys. I was really impressed with everything that I've heard. Obviously, as I stated before, our schools need more. Our kids deserve more, our staff deserve more. But this school, and this is something that I did bring up in the two buy that we had, is really represent, it goes, it looks at every project with an equity lens. It's not just attacking each school in certain districts and giving them certain funds. This really digs deep into what schools need throughout our whole district. And that was something that I was really impressed with. And I definitely noted that, that I want to make sure that all schools in the district are getting adequate funding to provide them with different tools. I love the different workstations that'll be available to different school sites. There's a lot of things that we can do with this. But I wanted to say, I appreciate that, the effort with this school, the effort with the staff. This, to me, is us doing something different. And we've talked about that before, being creative with these funds. And this says to me that we are doing that and we are taking the initiative. So I look forward to October 21st. As I've said before, I really appreciate the work going into this. I'm really excited to see what we can do together. So I look forward to October 21st. As I've said before, I really appreciate the work going into this. I'm really excited to see what we can do together.
Thank you, Member Villa. Member Morowski.
Thanks very much. And thanks, thank you to all of you for the opportunity to, to talk through a few more of the details. I think it's really helpful. I, I guess I had a couple of questions. On the, and I, I guess I maybe separate the project a little bit into those like categories, right? Of, of the, the kind of safety and, you know, accessibility and sort of the need to do's, right? I think those are just very straightforward to me. And I just appreciate the intensive effort of, you know, documenting every single, you know, detail across all of our school sites. It's just super impressive, the work that has been done. So on, on those, I think, you know, we're just, I'm just really grateful to our community for, for supporting the dollars to do those things that are obviously so desperately needed. On the, you know, on the, the second set of projects, which is more the visioning project, I had, you know, still a question about kind of efficiency in terms of like, is it, it doesn't seem like it's built into the tool at all? Like how many students are helped, you know, per like, is, is there like a per capita dollar amount that, that we look at? Or, or kind of any sort of efficiency weighing? And when I, when I say that, you know, like thinking about spending, you know, 30 million on a school that will serve 500 students versus 30 million on a school that will serve 2,000 students or something like that. So I, I just, you know, so if we're, if we're talking about equity and wanting to serve, you know, say if it's unduplicated kids or, you know, however, the LCAP, you know, kind of categories are built into there. Are we looking at how many, how many kids are we serving? Like if, even if you, you know, you take that, that category of, of kids who, who really, you know, need the investment, right? Have we looked at, have we looked at that as part of the index? I think that's where I'm still just trying to understand it a little better.
Yeah, I think your, your statement about which the students that are in most need of that investment is exactly what the equity index does. It identifies and uses the LCAP to help us identify the schools, the students and the neighborhoods that have historically been marginalized and received the least amount of funding as a way of correcting some of the historical challenges that this, that this district has undergone. So the idea here is to use the equity index as a way of a data-driven approach to providing that information. And then in terms of the number of students served, I think in a previous presentation, we shared with you how these types of new schools are drivers of economic activity in those neighborhoods. And so it's an actual, it's actually an opportunity for you as a board to take a leadership position in allowing us to right-size the schools to fit the current demographic and size of the, of the student body. And then hopefully over time, see the growth happen in those schools. And frankly, encourage, you know, the neighborhoods to come back to the local schools, strengthening families, strengthening communities. These and strengthening our sustainability initiatives by getting people off of the roads and lowering their commute time. So people don't have to drive across town to go to their favorite school. So that's kind of the high level picture about how we're looking at this tool and how the tool will shape and help you make these decisions based on the data. And again, looking at the communities that have received the least amount of funding in the past. I hope that answers the question. And it's a great question.
Yeah, I, it, it, yeah, it is, it is helpful and I, and I totally hear that, you know, and I, and I agree with it. And I, I guess I, I, I hope that we have like realistic projections about that. Because what I would, what I would want to know is, you know, overall, are we thinking, you know, if, if we're, if we're spending, I don't know, like $10,000 per, per student or something versus, you know, $5,000 per student and we're helping more students with the same amount of money. You know what I mean? I, I am just, you know, I, I do, I do want to believe that. I do want to take that leadership role. I do want to invest in these disadvantaged, historically disadvantaged areas and draw more people in. I don't know whether we have like an actual demographic analysis that would realistically lead to that outcome, you know? That's, that's what, that's what I, you know, would, would like to bring more analysis to bear on, on it. Because I, you know, I, I like that, that idea. But I just want to make sure that we're being, that we're being realistic about what, what it's going to achieve and that we're frankly getting the most bang for our buck for our students that need it most. Because I think that's, that's an imperative. Because if we're not doing that and thinking about efficiency, then we're, we're not doing as much as we can with the limited dollars that we have. And so I just really want to, as we go forward in these conversations, I, I really want to think about ways to, to bring that kind of, some kind of efficiency metric into, into the calculus here. And then I guess the other thing that, that I would say that I do worry about and I, you know, just looking at, you know, this is supposed to be a 10-year bond and looking at sort of the way some of these, some of our major facilities, like after 10 years, if they're not on the list for like a major overhaul, they're, they're getting into pretty bad shape. So I do, I do think, you know, I agree with, with Mr. Cash Mary. I think we need to look at more dollars. So I would be supportive of, you know, of having the district come back with, with some, with a plan to do more polling to see if, if that is a possibility. Because after, you know, now that we have this level of detailed information about the needs of, of all of our schools across the district. I think it's, I think it's more than apparent what, what we, what we need to do. So I know hopefully that there will be additional state or federal resources too, but the need is definitely there. So I'm just supportive of, of, you know, giving, giving as many students as we can the access to those incredible, those incredible facilities that we have planned. So thank you so much.
Member Rhodes.
Thank you. I like to say it's pretty clear. We, we've talked about it numerous times. What, how innovative and leading this type of idea when you come to facility usage is especially for our district. And, you know, honestly, guys, we are, we are Sacramento Unified School District. Sacramento Unified School District. There's a lot of peripherals and other districts in our area and county. But we are Sacramento and we should be taking leadership roles like we're taking now today and what you guys have brought forward. And really, the idea of strong schools build strong neighborhoods and communities is a fact as well. And when you see where schools have not had the proper investment, you also see that kind of mirrored in the communities around them. And so I'm in full support of this document and that's moving forward, knowing that it's a fluid document. But this is something that, that connects all of our best values. And it connects all of our stakeholder groups and things that we've been working on. And it, and it disengages just us thinking about our areas. We get to think about equity system-wide and that is a rarity. And I look forward to the vote coming up on 21st. So thank you guys.
Member Philip and then Member Garcia.
Yeah, I just want to put this on the record. And I'm just going to read it. The difference between equity and equality. Though often used interchangeably, equality and equity are quite different. Equality simply means everyone is treated the same exact way, regardless of need or any other individual difference. Equity, on the other hand, means everyone is provided with what they need to succeed. And the reason I kind of start with that and maybe it's just a little history lesson to share that some schools are going to feel left out. And that's going to have to be okay, even though we would like to serve everyone. I, you know, in listening to what Trustee Morowski said, you know, she talked about the historically disadvantaged schools. And if we think about it in the, the proper terms, it's more of a systemically targeted area. I, I think sometimes, you know, gentle with our words, but I, I don't think that a lot of the talk here points to equity, it points more to equality. And I hear what Trustee Morowski is saying is that we don't want to leave anyone out. But sometimes when trying to make sure that equity occurs, there are people left out. So I, you know, it's not a challenge or anything like that, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the district as a whole has a firm understanding of what equity is when compared to equality. How they are not the same and that we tend to talk about equity and then we shift into well, all. And like, no, it's actually not all. It's going to be some and that some is supposed to bring other folks up to the level of those who are usually in the all category. So I just, you know, I just want to kind of get that on the record. I'm sure we'll be talking about this more at some point, but I, I just want to make sure that, you know, this is kind of, it's more, to me, it seems like more of a repair of a systemic type of, type of targeting. So, and I know that sounds a little controversial, but I'm not as concerned with that as y'all think I should be. But I think honestly that, you know, we, and I, I, I'm trying to find the right, right words for this, but if we are paying attention to what equity is, then we also need to pay attention to the fact that there is, you know, privilege behind certain things that have happened in the past. So I just wanted to make sure I had that on the record. Good.
Thank you. Member Phillips, Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So I really appreciated the two buys. You know, I learned a lot. This analysis is very thorough. So I really appreciate that they're very comprehensive profiles of every single school site. I don't think that's been available in the past. So whether they benefit from funding now or in the future, we at least know it's a very thorough evaluation of what all of their needs are. I also wanted to, I also appreciate that you said that because our schools are so old, all of them. They all have needs. Some of them have more than others. And so that's what this tool is for, right? To ensure that the ones who have greater needs get more, just like our LCFF formula. But we start with a base grant and then we add to that depending on student needs and, and demographics. So, so I definitely want to support that, that we're looking at this through an equity lens. I do have a question though about, I feel like the analyses are based on what's there. And it doesn't factor in, and maybe it doesn't, I just didn't catch this, sort of, how do we grow? How do we add capacity? Because we have a lot of funding available that's tied to transitional kinder expansion. We have expanded learning opportunities, right, that we're supposed to offer our students. I think it's like nine hours a day, like summer months, et cetera, breaks, et cetera. We also have a need for before and after school programs. How are we going to house them as well? We also have the need and opportunity to build established wellness centers, community schools. So I'm trying to figure out some of these, the analyses, just analyze or assess the buildings that are in place right now and the needs to maintain them, repair them or rebuild them. But it doesn't tell me what school sites can, would need a whole new building from scratch. So, so, so how does this tool help inform that? As, as we move forward to trying to meet all these needs that all need space, physical space?
I, I guess I would start by saying and invite, you know, Ms. Ramos to also chime in. She spoke in the last meeting quite eloquently about a study that we're working on about, we have, I believe it's seven school sites that are not currently being used. And we plan to take a look at those in a much greater detail to see how they could be used. We're doing what we call the highest and best use study of those schools. Additionally, there is capacity in several of our schools. And the tool that we've provided to you as part of the facilities master plan is not intended to answer all of those questions in and of itself, which is why we have said that it's a tool that our staff will use so that they can look at some of the data and information and package it together when they put, bring a, an actual facility spending plan to you again, and hopefully the next several months. For example, you know, we looked, I, I mentioned in our sample school there that it had a capacity utilization rate of just under 90% currently. So even in our schools that have very high capacity use, there is still some space available and some of our other schools have more space available. So, you know, again, staff would need to look at that. There would be other factors that would influence, you know, where you might want to put a, a pre-kindre program that are outside just the ideas of how much space there is. There may be other factors that have to do with equity or other issues or even funding. So the tool provides you with a data-based way of providing you information and guidance. But there's still an overlay that is left open to Ron, Mr. Hickey and his staff to come back as they develop the plan.
And I could add to it. Thank you, Dr. Sada, Board Member Garcia. As we mentioned in the two buy, we currently have underway and should be wrapped up pretty soon. As Dr. Sada explained, a best use analysis of, of certain facilities. And we started with nine initially because there's some very pressing matters that we have to address with those nine. If we try to tackle 72, it would be a longer term process and we wouldn't get the data back as quick as we need on these particular nine properties. And so the second phase to this facility master plan is doing just that, what Member Garcia is alluding to is that an analysis of our school sites and determining, are we using these schools to their maximum capacity for what they're intended? Or the program that's residing at that site? And so just very high level, what that involves is that doing a very thorough review, not only of the facility, but of our programmatic areas, interviewing our staff, our community, kind of like restarting the facility master plan, but from a different perspective, not just to identify what we have to do with the existing buildings and how we have to modernize them possibly, but what we want to do actually with that site. Do we want this site to actually have a, an additional kindergarten? Or do we want that site to just be focused? And I'm just going to throw out some ideas out there that I've seen at other districts. Just be a TK through third school site and then others just be four through six. Or perhaps those sites are going to focus on some particular educational areas. And so this requires those interviews and figuring out, you know, what it is that our plans are for our district. What are some of our vision projects that we do want to take on so that we know how we have to transform these facilities? And which ones are better equipped already and which ones can be transformed depending on who may go there? So there's quite a bit of analysis that has to go into this. And then of course, the demographics. I mean, are these schools, the ones that are slated to be more receptive for TK? Do we have those populations that are going to draw more TK students in another part of town? So more to come on that and you will be seeing from, from us is, is a proposal to go ahead and take on that next part of the facility master plan. Right now, we're starting with this immediate because we knew that we needed to tackle those assessments and figure out what we need to repair right away, what's that risk? And then those vision projects, the equity component. And then of course, we started with that first chunk that I just explained, the nine that we, we have underway right now, the best in use analysis. So I hope that answered that. And that's a very good question because we know we have to complete that next phase.
It did. Thank you. And you touched on the, on the sites that are underutilized. So, so you answered two questions, you, you provided me with two answers there. And then just my last question would be, does this analysis, will it also factor in?
And then just my last question would be, does this analysis, will it also factor in like the athletic fields? Because I saw that there were many where, you know, is there like a soccer field? Yes. Is there like a softball field somewhat? So I wasn't sure like what those answers meant, if they were like in the middle. What does that mean for a particular school site that wants to get from either a no to a yes, or a somewhat to a yes? When does that analysis happen? Is it part of this pool or is it part of a future assessment?
Yeah, I guess what I would say, the short story is that we have, again, you know, we have data and we have qualitative data, which is, you know, the core, the human overlay. And so much like as you're developing your, you know, your academic plans to the LCFF, you know, we would be working with the local school sites to actually determine what those specific projects were that could increase those scores once we've identified those schools to be, you know, a higher priority or wherever they fit in the kind of priority list. So, you know, it's, I don't know that it's our role necessarily to say it's a soccer field versus a football field. I think the right answer would be that, once the project has been approved, then there is a series of workshops that are done with the user groups onsite and the parent groups and other people who are, you know, involved in the process. And and the architects that we hire just sort of make those types of decisions, or those very specific decisions.
Okay. And just my last question, because you touched upon something. In the presentation, you have, after the project list has been approved, you have additional in-person community forums. So can you, can you just let, maybe share with us a little bit about what that looks like? Do you go back to the school site that's been selected for a project and then talk to the parents at that school site about the project that's going to happen? I'm just wondering what that looks like.
So one of the feedback points we received in our virtual community forums was that, you know, there was a, you know, some concern or just, concerns is a strong word, but a request that, you know, we tried to meet in person with, throughout the district. And I think traditionally, when we didn't have COVID, we would hold these community forums at each of the high schools so that we have full coverage over the entire district. And we have ways that, you know, people who live in those neighborhoods could come to the local high school, sometimes middle schools, to kind of see the work that we're doing and hear the presentations that we've been making. And so we never, because of COVID and, you know, the Delta variant specifically, we had planned to go back into the community and have these live. But unfortunately, we had to cancel those and do them online. So the feedback we received again was, please come out to the neighborhoods and and let's have a dialogue and really specifically about the facilities master plan portion. And we're happy to do that. I do think that once we identify the schools that go, you know, get started, and you'll, you'll see these kind of rolling out on a year-by-year basis, those projects will be handled at the school sites. And the architects will be working with a group of, you know, interested people from each of those school sites. But that's not what we, like, community forum, we mean the district broadly.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just real quickly, Dr. Sada, the community meetings that you're proposing, could we actually hold those outside at some of our comprehensive high schools? I know that we're getting to the fall or winter months to where we're, I guess, a little bit more difficult to do things in the evening time outside due to the weather and lack of sunlight. But maybe Saturday meetings or things like that could be helpful. Is that an option?
Of course. I think, you know, for us, it was really just an issue of safety protocols. But we're certainly more than happy to do what, you know, what's needed to get the word out. Mr. Hickey, you're nodding. All right, you take it away.
You're absolutely correct, Dr. Sada, is that we're prepared to do what protocols allow. You know, right now, Victoria Flores has done a great job with Keyshawn putting together a COVID protocol with in-person events for the district, for the students. So we will be able to follow those protocols and provide some sort of in-person gathering. Member Rhodes, while we may have to restrict the numbers, but we should be able to do something.
Thank you. Thank you. I look, I look forward to those as well as we engage our community differently. Coming out of, well, hopefully coming out of the Delta variant and issues that we have. But yeah, engaging the community is going to be key to this as we move forward as well. So thank you guys for your flexibility and always thank you, Ms. Flores, for her hard work where she does, keeping herself healthy and safe during this pandemic time.
Thank you. And member Rhodes, you literally took my question. I had it written down. Said live, outdoors. Thank you so much to staff for the work on this. It's, you know, we've been working on this for a very long time, back into the, when we were having the facilities committee days. And so thank you to staff and DLR group. I'm excited to bring this back on the 21st to have this baseline for us to be able to work off. So thank you so much. This is a conference item. We will be bringing this back on October 21st for approval. All right, item 10.0, public hearing. 10.1 Public Hearing AB 1200 Disclosure and Approval of Teamsters Summer School Program 2020-21. Who do we have? Oh, Raul, sorry. Gosh, it's getting late. I must be getting tired. Good evening, Mr. Bozio.
Thank you. Thank you, President Pritchett. Good evening, Board of Education, President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar. I am here to present to you all the AB 1200 disclosure and the approval of an MOU for summer work with the Teamsters Labor Partners. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Just to keep it real short and brief here, the Teamsters employees assigned to work sites directly, supporting the summer program, are to be provided a $750 stipend for their service. It's a one-time, non precedent-setting agreement. And the agreement was just fully executed in early September. Next slide, please. The funding and fiscal impact for this agreement comes out of the ELO COVID one-time funding source at a cost of $32,808.60 in salaries and benefits. The funds were previously budgeted for salaries and benefits under the ELO grant for summer program. Next slide. And that's all I have. Take any questions and answers.
Quick and easy, Raul. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this, Ms. Collins? No public comment?
No.
Okay. And do we have any board discussion? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion. All right, a motion a second, student preference vote. All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Morowski? Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Philip?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Item 10.2 Public Hearing Approval of UPE Article 5 Evaluation Tentative Agreement. Mr. Bozio, welcome back.
I'm back. I'm back. And thank you, President Pritchett. We are here to present for you the tentative agreement on the Article 5, article in the CBA with our UPE partners, who represent our administrators, site administrators and some in the central office as well. The existing language of Article 5, which deals with evaluation of work performance evaluations, is being deleted and replaced with provisions that are contained in the document in your board packet. Go ahead, go to the next slide. Some of those key provisions are aligning the operation, operating principles with the CPSL's, CAPSLS, California Professional Standards for Education Leaders. So it's being updated to align with with the CPSLs. And the evaluation instrument itself is being, has been revised to, again, be based on those standards. Next slide. Some of the key provisions include the sequence of evaluation, that new administrators will be evaluated for their first two years of employment. And then administrators with the district longer than two years are evaluated every other year based on their social security number. Evaluation timeline procedure includes a pre-evaluation conference, mid-year progress conference, the transmission of the evaluation and a final conference. Next slide. In the case of an evaluation that contains two or more, does not meet standard markings, the evaluator and evaluator shall collaboratively develop a plan for improvement in the identified standards and element areas. The professional improvement plan may also be initiated in a non-evaluative year when deficiencies are evident. I believe that concludes the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bozio. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Do we have any board comment, question? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, I put my hand up.
Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Member Phillips.
I was taking too long to push the button.
That's okay. I'm glad you were able to get in. Let's, go ahead.
Raul, can you go back a couple of slides on that? I'm sorry. That one. So we're saying right now that any new administrator who comes in will, barring any, you know, attenuating circumstances of failure as doing their job, will get an actual evaluation after the first two years or during the first two years?
Each of the first two years, they would be evaluated.
Okay, one each year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Is that your only question, Member Philip?
Was it?
All righty. And we have a motion and a second on the table, student preferential vote. All right, the superintendent roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia? Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Philip?
Aye.
Perfect. And thank you, Mr. Bozio, for getting us back on track on time. Congratulations.
Member Pritchett, if I can just interject very quickly, just on that agenda item, I just want to say thank you to our labor partner, UPE. This, this is actually a very significant addition to the CBA in that I think there was recognition on both of our parts that we needed to make sure that we were tying the evaluation, the standards of, 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 of the profession of our administrative staff. And those are outlined very carefully. The fact that we were both willing to adopt something that, that applies to the standard of that particular profession, I think, is, 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 is very helpful to our students and to our families. And I'm just grateful that we were able to work on that agreement.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, item 11.0 Communications, 11.1 Employee Organization Reports, SCTA. SCTA. David Fisher? Nikki Molesky? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Nikki, if you can hear us. Looks like you are muted at the moment, if you're able to unmute yourself. No? Okay. SEIU? ECS?
Mr. Cashmary's on. Looks like he's muted.
Mo Cashmary's on there for SEIU? Go ahead, Mo, if you can unmute yourself. All right, so we, is the? It's still muted? Okay. Do we have anybody from Teamsters or UPE on? No? Okay. Do we want to try Nikki Molesky one more time? Go ahead, Nikki. Okay, we will come back to employee, oh, you have, we have Nikki? We have Mo. Okay, go ahead, Mo. You're on mute at the moment.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. I can hear you now.
Mo Cashmary, yeah, thank you so much. I just wanted to do the SEIU update for the classified staff. You know, we lost a classified staff member to COVID, a bus driver, her name is Barbara Moore, which is very sad. And, you know, we've also got one, one transportation employee that's in the hospital right now, fighting for her life. And, you know, it's a scary time. And on top of that, you know, what's really happening is our, our school district's like a ship with a lot of holes in it right now. And every time we plug a hole, it creates another hole. This has just been a real problem. We're down 20 positions of bus drivers, which means kids are not getting up, they're having to wait longer. They're having to cram them in there, so there's no COVID protection. And, you know, we just don't have enough staff. For example, just today, my son in fifth grade, they didn't have a sub, couldn't get a sub. So they put them, they split him into three different classrooms. He went into a class which also had a sub. You know, it's just, this is getting to be a huge problem. We don't have enough, we don't have enough qualified teachers, we don't have enough bus drivers, we don't have enough nutrition staff, we don't have enough aides. We really need this district to lean into, we need this board to specifically lean into a change of culture where we're supporting our staff and giving them what they need instead of constantly fighting and cutting. Like, we need to create a district where people want to come, instead of a district which is known for lots of drama, right? And so we, you know, for example, with the bus drivers, you know, they're asking for different things, like not just competitive wages and benefits, but also looking at ways that we can, you know, match what other districts are doing in terms of paying for training, et cetera, improving our pipeline issues, and we're going to need your help moving in and doing all that stuff. We're about to start bargaining soon. And we do it, you know, and we hope we'll get the board's support and really giving, getting our employees the money that they need to be competitive, to draw quality applicants. Because if we can't get people in our district, then we're not filling our main role, job as a board and as a district, which is to make sure we have enough teachers and support staff, the whole community of folks to make sure these schools run. We just don't have enough folks. We hope you will help us change that by not trying to cut people's wages and benefits, but instead trying to compete so that we can recruit and retain the best staff possible and recruit the good staff away from the other district. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mo. Do we have Nikki back yet? Okay, she just signed off? Okay. All right.
President Pritchett, we have two public comments.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
The first is Terrence Gladney.
At the September 16th board meeting, following David Fisher's SCTA comment, Board Member Morowski made a statement which I think really exemplifies a problem that is perceived in the community. She said, you know, it's okay to hold us accountable, but it's not okay to attack our staff. And what I heard is, what I see a lot of times is board members internalize comments that are meant to challenge the performance What I see a lot of times is board members internalize comments that are meant to challenge the performance. And the system of our staff over which you guys are supposed to oversee. So Board Member Morowski's comment, I felt she was internalizing comments made about staff members. And then labeling. Actual questions of accountability as an attack. Um, and we've seen it with body language, specifically following comments made by uh, you know, S C T A members or or the organization itself. Um, and isolating their comments and extracting their comments from a multitude of community comments and choosing to. Really attack their comments and not taking them for what they are. I don't know that I've ever heard a board member take the time to address. The continual. Questions that are raised by S C T A. Other than just to sort of defer. Um, you know, and and I think that is an opportunity to have an open and honest conversation. Maybe you guys do a special workshop where you guys are actually showing the public that. Our board, our staff and 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 S C T A, our teachers can sit in the same space and have an actual adult conversation. Not only would that go a long way in building trust of we as parents in our system, which includes both groups of educational partners, but. Perhaps it's just, you know, step in the right direction, you know, I mean. We're supposed to be the adults exemplifying and and and, you know, showing our kids how to get through conflict. But yet, these conflicts have existed for way too long. If they exist in our classrooms with our kids, you know, I mean, we would expect that they fix those behaviors or we hold them accountable. But yet, the same conversations come up continually. Who's gonna be the bigger adult? Who's wanting to be the actual adult and show our kids the way we're supposed to behave?
Thank you, Terrence. Next comment.
Taylor Kayata.
I I'm actually here for the C A C comment for the next item.
Oh, okay, we'll, we'll keep you um stay online for that one then. All right, do, that was the last public comment for this. Okay. Item eleven point two district advisory committees, C A C, Taylor, go ahead.
All right, thank you. And I'm actually combining my time with Benita Shaiola, our chair.
Uh, is this a public comment for C A C? Are you reporting for the C A C?
I'm reporting, but combining it with her public comment so that, because it's a little bit over three minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Taylor Kayata. I'm the secretary of the district's community advisory committee for special education. We're a group of parents, teachers, and community members who advise you on matters concerning students with disabilities as the education code tasks us to do. Tonight, I must unfortunately issue a dire warning that the state of a special education in our district has reached a crisis point. The district is failing to perform even its most basic functions for many students with disabilities. These children are being left behind as services are withheld. Assessments continue to be delayed and disability identification is largely on hold. First and foremost, I would like to thank Board Member Phillips for her continued attention to our community and for attending a C A C meeting on September twenty sixth. At this meeting, a parent spoke about not being able to send her child who has disabilities to the classroom because of health concerns in their home. She has not been able to get ahold of anyone in the district this school year for assistance. She is now considering enrolling her child. In home and hospital instruction because that is better than the status quo. That she is forced into this choice is unacceptable and likely a violation of her state and federal rights. And her story is just one of many similarly distressing stories us and the C A C have been hearing. It seems that the district's plan for students with disabilities this year is to force them to return to the classroom or else forego special education services. Many parents have reported that I E P teams will not allow their children to enroll in independent study if they wanna keep their I E Ps. We have warned you of the risks of heading into the school year under A B one thirty without a plan for students with disabilities, but you didn't listen to us. At this point, I feel compelled to make a statement to the public who are listening. Do not sign away your child's hard fought I E P plan. Your I E P services are guaranteed by federal law and are not something the district can force you to forfeit in order to keep your family safe. C D E guidance concerning A B one thirty confirms that the district is acting contrary to the law. C D E's recent guidance states that a school district shall offer independent study if a parent or guardian determines that in-person instruction would put a student's health at risk. But clarifies that this does not authorize a school district to refuse to consider providing independent study to students solely on the basis of that student's disability. It continues. While the district and the parents or guardians are working to find the best option, the student needs to be receiving services as indicated on their operative I E P. In fact, last year, the district acquired parents to amend I E Ps to allow services to be provided virtually. These I E Ps from last year showed that the district was able to provide these services in such a manner as it should be doing now when appropriate. The near closure of a special day class at A M when due to low enrollment is an illustration of the mistreatment the district is showing students with disabilities this year. We are glad to hear that the S D C at that school is apparently not closing. However, that this one class was saved does not offer us much comfort. There are still many S D Cs that are being closed with very little warning or notice to parents. That these potentially permanent changes in services at a school site were even on the table in a year where we are nowhere back to normal is concerning. When students with disabilities return to the classroom and our community gets safer from COVID. And when the district catches up to its responsibility to identify disabilities, these services will be needed. In the immediate term, the C A C has a request that will fit even within your current model for students with disabilities. If a student signs up for independent study, they should be able to keep their current service providers. Their speech therapists, aides, et cetera, should not change. They should remain connected to the people who have been working with them on their I E P for the duration of their time in the district. And who'll be with them once the pandemic ends and they enroll from Cap City. Filling this request to ensure the stability for our children while avoiding service mismatches in the future is something that you should consider. In closing, please heed our message tonight. The district needs to act immediately to make necessary corrections to its special education program to ensure that our children receive the services they are entitled to. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, D L A? I believe we have a public comment on D L A from Terrence Gladney.
Um, my uh comment is for the L C A P pack.
Oh, okay. L, L, uh, do we have anybody from the L C A P pack?
No, that, that's, that's me.
Oh, you're reporting for the row. I got you, Terrence. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Um, I'm gonna read um a summary report that was provided. I'm a, and and I'm a newly appointed uh member along with Conrad Crump representing Board Member Phillips, but of course standing. Alongside all of my fellow L C A P members uh representing all uh students and families within the district. Um, at our recent meeting, uh, we received a presentation from staff um with the Family and Community Empowerment Department. Um, so Sean Alexander was there to um cover such topics as um, you know, what do parent volunteer opportunities look like? Um, we also received a uh presentation from Gretchen V. Leon with the Parent Teacher Home Visit Program. Um, he obviously had a multitude of questions about, you know, what that looks like now. Um, we were presenting information on how they increase their access to families um during um distance learning. And how they had uh bridge visits um to, you know, continue to to be in contact with families and and give us a better platform for those families to return to school. Um. And obviously, they did have to pivot with their training models. Um, they actually have one upcoming on October eleventh and twelfth, which will be virtual. Um, and they made that available to us so that we might be able to observe the training because there is obviously. And interest from the pack on expanding the availability of parent uh home visits, you know, to all of our schools. And um, you know, for years, obviously, it's been limited both by funding and, you know, it it does require a culture. Um, because one of the non-negotiables with the parent teacher home visits is that it is an opt-in. Um, so that not only the educators and staff members of a school site, but also the families and students, you know, have. And retain their choice to to participate or not. Um, and that really just uh lends itself to the authenticity of the relationship and the and the ongoing relationship at the schools and in between the schools and the and the family. Um. We also, obviously, as you guys saw earlier in the uh S R three presentation, uh, we had the opportunity to review that. To see how closely aligned with the L C A P recommendations that were presented. Um, and we had those questions um about, you know, are there plan Bs in place? Um, you know, in the event of. Certain services not being available. You know, is there the ability to leverage those funds or re redirect those funds possibly to C B Os that can provide those similar services? Maybe not in a multitude of, say, like a a trained psychologist, but just in providing mentoring and other support services. Um. You know, using these one-time funds to eliminate any cost requirement for students to participate in school activities that would. Increase their access to a social environment and better prepare them to be in a space with other children. Um, and again, although they are uh one-time funds, you know, we're we're looking for at least a uh, you know, one to two or possibly three-year impact on those expenditures. Um, we are also in the process of coordinating a a process and 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 plan to. Do strategic outreach to our school sites. Um, I believe following models that have been utilized by some board members, such as Board Member Rhodes, um utilizing his L C A P pack members. To strategically cover the footprint of our district. Um, and and reach out and allow parents and and students more visibility into what the L C F F is and and what those funds really mean. Um, so that was during my first meeting, and then we also have uh small meetings that allow us to dig a little bit deeper. Um, outside of our our general group. So um. I think that we all as individual L C A P members um are looking to our board members to work collaboratively with us to figure out. How do we cover um, you know, our our very large district footprint? And expand awareness of what this is so that we have sustainability for the pack and and more voices in our L C F F process. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Student Advisory Council. Do you have anybody? No. Okay, we'll get to you. All right. African American Advisory Board? No? Okay. And we don't have any public comment on any of these, correct?
Well, uh, we have Ellen Yen Wykoff who signed up. For a public comment on this item.
And is, is that person on? Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I had that comment for seven point O. It's not on this issue.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Helen, for hanging in there. All right, um, eleven point three Superintendent's report.
Thank you, uh, President Pritchett, um, and good evening, everyone. Uh, we are, as you know, just over one month into our new school year. Uh, having welcomed uh many of our students back to in-person learning. And uh, that is, of course, due to just the hundreds and thousands of caring adults um that um are. Doing everything they can to make sure that we are meeting all of their social and emotional, their academic needs, of course. Um, because of the amount of stress that our students have endured over uh the past many months when. Uh, we weren't able to bring them back to our campuses. And we know that the isolation of distance learning exacerbated for many of our students. I uh constantly am talking to families and receiving text messages. Uh, telling me about um. The smiles and 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 everything else that has come back uh into the lives of our students. Um, and so I'm grateful and just wanna thank and acknowledge uh the amount of work that um that our team has done. Uh, but I also um uh am still uh very, very anxious uh every single day about uh the threat. That COVID nineteen still brings uh into our community. And the threat uh that we still face in terms of health and safety of all of our students. Uh, given um just the the Delta variant um and the the unknowns of 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 this uh of this virus. I do want to acknowledge um that our schools are, of course, supporting in-person dis- uh instruction by implementing a layered set of mitigation. Measures uh that is all uh that was all all outlined in our district's return to health plan. Um, and I am particularly want to uh just say thank you uh to our health services team uh for their continued leadership. To work to ensure that our students um are able to stay in school uh in front of their teachers and the. Hundreds of caring adults in our school district. I. Uh, want to just say thank you to them because uh so much of the work to keep our students healthy and safe uh has fallen on them. Uh, and they are doing it um just admirably. I um also was just reminded, and I've said this. Uh, to several of you um of um. Only time will tell uh whether uh the decision to stand up the testing infrastructure across seventy-five school sites. I was at Washington Elementary School um this morning and I saw. Uh, how our health aides have um along with Dr. Godina there. Uh, created a system in which our students are getting tested um regularly. Um, and uh the the thought that that has um allowed us to keep our students safe and healthy. Um, but I was also reminded of um of just um. The amount of work um as my daughter, who um is playing uh volleyball uh as a seventh grader. Um, has uh continued to send me snapshots of her test results of uh the antigen testing that has allowed her to stay on that team. And just watching her play a a couple of volleyball games. It is more uncomfortable probably for me to see all of our uh athletes wearing masks, playing uh sports. Uh, but I think as I talk to her and others, um, they are. Uh, quite fine and happy just being in space with one another, interacting, playing, uh, and engaging in in sports and extracurricular activities. And. I know it's uncomfortable for us, um, and maybe also for many of our students, but I think on balance. Um, they are more grateful um that uh they can uh engage in these activities with one another. And I also think that it speaks to. Um. How equity plays out in ways that maybe we didn't envision. Um, I can only imagine what um. Our sports programs might look like if we had uh required our students to. Uh, undergo weekly testing and we'd have to tell our families that they had to go to a clinic or a central location. In order for their children to be engaged in extracurricular activities and the fact that our. Our students can just access our care rooms and uh receive that kind of testing again is. Something that um I think we ought to recognize and commend um. Victoria Flores and her entire team for having had the the foresight to stand up that kind of effort. Now, do I wish that we would have had the human resources primarily to also stand up? Uh, and uh an infrastructure that have, that would have resulted in more seamless and efficient contact tracing so that we didn't have to. Do all of that as well? Of course I would. Um, but the reality is we are challenged like everyone else in terms of staffing. Um. But uh again, only time will tell whether um, given uh that conundrum, we should have stood up contact tracing and not not testing. Uh, but the reality is we went with with testing and uh we're doing everything we can to try to create more efficiencies in contact tracing and follow-up and and everything else that comes with. Um, having to deal with this pandemic. I also want to just give a very quick update and we'll give a broader update uh next week on Tuesday at our special board meeting, but um I. Continue to acknowledge the challenges that we face with independent study. Uh, from a staffing perspective, uh, we still have about six hundred and twenty-four students that are waiting for. Teachers to be assigned. Um, we will. Uh, continue to work diligently to try to overcome these staffing challenges. I am. Um, not proud one bit uh that some of the uh staffing um that we've been able to. Send over to independent studies to Cap City have then resulted in vacancies at school sites. Um, but this is a function of this challenge that we're facing today. Of how we have to abide by ed code as well. Um, and are, we're gonna continue to do this, but again, I I I I I recognize that um many of our parents are very dissatisfied with 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 our inability to staff up this program, and we're gonna continue to do it. I'll also have uh more comments uh for the board and our community. Um, as we uh look at the possibility, um, not the possibility, but the announcement from the governor of a vaccine mandate and what that might mean for independent study program. Programming in Sac City as well uh when we meet on Tuesday, but. Again, I I do wanna just um make sure that I mention um uh that that portion of independent study in my comments. You also heard uh in the public comments uh today, uh, the significant interest and also media coverage about the. Process impacting one of our special ed programs at A M win. Um, are, we will um put a pause uh on this process um at A M win um while we examine all of the issues related. To students being served in that particular program. It still is a small program. We still have vacancies in special ed. We're still gonna have to confront the challenge. We're still going to have to confront the challenge of how do we continue to serve small groups of students, given the many recommendations of state entities that have said that those are issues that we have to confront. But for the moment, again, we are going to put a pause as we continue to analyze that issue over the next few months. And finally, I do want to invite our community, as you heard from Steven, Mr. Fong, to participate and give us your thoughts and input in terms of our ESTER expenditure plan. The website is up on our website, and we really do welcome community input. You have heard that we've been very intentional in making sure that the LCAP is the driver of our expenditures altogether. But we recognize that we have thousands of families that we serve that aren't able to participate in district-wide committees that you all have heard of, that we're grateful for the countless hours that many of our parents already put into those efforts. But this is a great opportunity if you're not able to participate in those more organized district-wide advisories for you to give us your input. And of course, we are going to take all of that and treat it with a lot of respect. So with that, thank you very much for the opportunity, President.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll just keep mine really short. I just wanted to thank all of the parents and teachers that reached out to me from the AMWynn community over the past week. There's nothing that I love more than advocates for our community. And so I know I was not able to get back to every single one of you. A lot of you reached out, so good for you. I just want to personally thank all of you guys who reached out to me. With that, I will give the floor to our student board member, 11.5.
Thank you. Today, I would like to briefly first shed light on the situation in JFK. In the past board meeting, I remember talking about how there were 100 cases, 100 quarantine in JFK. And I've just checked the dashboard and currently there had been 585 quarantine overall. And I would like to say that that's one-fourth of the JFK population since school started. And as the weather is cooling down, we're not sure if COVID is going to get worse. So I would like to, on one hand, I think going to school has definitely been beneficial to students' mental health. But at the same time, we should reevaluate if our schools are safe or not and if we should do more cleaning or other procedure to help decrease the number of cases. To end this on a positive note, I would like to update on our Student Advisory Council progress. In the past two weeks, we have been, we have been doing a lot of stuff with many different departments. First, we provided our student input on the LCAP plan, and we collaborated on the refinement and implementation of the State Seal of Civic Engagement. Our first newsletter was released recently and has drawn attention of various heads in the district. And we have a new logo designed by me and Louz from the Student Advisory Council. And in the future, our newsletter would include student features. Moving forward, the Student Advisory Council will be reaching out to students through our social media at scusd.sac on Instagram, and we will hold virtual forums and conduct surveys. We are continuing our work on our various initiatives, including we're working with Planned Parenthood to work on a more inclusive sex ed curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 11.6, information sharing by board members. Do we have anybody that would like to share? Member Rhodes?
Okay, I'll make this quick. Tomorrow at Success Academy, previously known as Mark Hopkins, we're having a free food distribution in partnership with NorCal Resist. And this is a continued effort of re-centering our neighborhood schools as community hubs. But I would like to say that this work couldn't be done without the amazing Principal Swindle and her staff, lead staff member Kyle Island. And so we'll be there from 10 a.m. to 12:00, no IDs required, open to all community members. So we're really excited about this work to continually make our schools a place that not only serves as a great educational experiences, but the whole community as a whole.
Great, thank you for that update. Member Murawski?
Thank you. Less information sharing, but a request. It just, tonight's meeting reminded me that, you know, although I feel that, you know, many of our, you know, parents and community members who call in are passionate and most are respectful, that we also have and will continue to have some folks that want to share misinformation or disinformation about health and safety issues particularly related to vaccines. And I just want to request that we do all we can to correct the record on any misinformation about the health and safety and efficacy of vaccines and would request that staff look into, you know, how we can best, how we can best do that to be able to make sure that our community is not exposed to wrong information that we know is incorrect on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wu.
Thank you. The week of the 21st, from Tuesday through Saturday, is the Conference of Great City Schools Annual Conference. It is virtual, but I'm not sure if I'm going to make it on the 21st, just to put you on notice now.
Okay.
We're meeting on, from 8 o'clock in the morning through the day, and we're meeting, yeah, we're meeting half-day on Saturday, so.
Okay. Thank you.
May be here.
Okay, all right. Testing any others? Moving on to item 12.0, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion to second, student preferential vote? Thank you, Superintendent Rolka?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Abstain.
All right. Item 13.0, Business and Financial Information Reports Proceed. Item 14.0, Future Board Meetings and Dates, October 21st at 4:30 here and November 4th at 4:30 here. Member Phillips, would you like to adjourn us?
Certainly, I don't have specific language for how we do that, but I'm sure a student board member will catch me up on that. But I just wanted to say that in closing, the Board of Education would like to uplift Ms. Barbara Moore, who recently passed away. Ms. Moore was a beloved district bus driver who was dedicated not only to her student writers, but to her professionalism. We mourn the loss of our educational partner, friend, and union sister and offer our most profound condolences to her family, friends, and colleagues. Rest in power, Ms. Barbara. And I'd like to move to adjourn.
Thank you, can I get a second? All right, all in favor say aye. Thank you, thank you, Member Phillips.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.